Good evening. It's 6:31 PM on Wednesday, August 7, 2024. I'm going to call the Lunenburg School Committee Special Meeting to order. This meeting will be broadcast later at a later date through the local access cable channel and on the public access Facebook page. And we follow Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of all this discussion. Not all items listed may be in fact discussed and other items not listed may also not be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the law. The first item on the agenda is public comment. I do want to remind the public of our school committee policy on public comment. Specifically, the topics for discussion should be limited to those items within the school committee's scope of authority. The authority of the school committee primarily concerns the review and approval of the budget of the district's public schools, the performance of the superintendent, and the educational goals and policies of the district's public schools. Comments and complaints regarding school personnel, apart from a superintendent or students, are generally prohibited unless those comments and complaints concern matters within the scope of the school committee authority. At this time, I'll open it up to public comment from the public.
Plug my ears and talk.
Do you have your green light on?
I do. Okay. Thank you for that school comment. That was a brief intro and reminder. Thank you, Chair, Mr. Brian. Okay. As a marketing and communications professional, I receive myriad performance metrics related to social media channels. I doubt it will surprise you that our data show Facebook as a forum for paid advertisements and predominantly negative trending conversations. In addition, I work closely with public health researchers who are at a breakneck pace, uncovering the detrimental effects of social media on individual and societal health and well-being. This to say, Facebook is not healthy. The loudest, ugliest Facebook voices do not speak for the majority of residents in Lunenburg. The cyberbullying that occurred targeting our recently departed hire would never be tolerated if it were directed at a minor or if the words "tate" were spoken in person. Landbasting a person's religion and political views is abhorrent in any case, and concerns about curricular or pedagogical methods or content should have been directed respectfully to this leadership body, which could have dealt with them appropriately. To support our override campaign efforts, I was part of a group who engaged in the Discussing Lunenburg Facebook group. That was tough. I did not like it. And I honestly think that the in-person campaign efforts, like talking to people at sporting events, did more to advance our cause and public understanding of the issues at hand. In the end, voter turnout in Lunenburg was still pretty low. Though we did pass the override, and as soon as it was over, I once again happily uninstalled Facebook from my phone. So while people like me may not be joining the dialogue on Facebook, we are here. We're paying attention to what happens in our town. We're ready to stand up for due process, including appropriate governance, as it pertains to our schools through this body. I recommend that this board consider action that taps the work of the PTO and the Family Schools Partnership Compact, and that you dig deep to enact creative ways to better connect this district with its community. If we have healthy alternatives to Facebook, then the bully's outrage will seem less dominating, and we'll be better for it. How about coffee with the superintendent or pizza night with the school committee? I'd be willing to buy a few pizzas if it meant we could actually have a dialogue as opposed to this very necessary but unengaged forum, where the public may only comment and witness deliberations, and there's no avenue for really asking questions in the moment. Thank you in advance for considering ways to build a collaborative connection to all Lunenburg residents, not just parents. Lunenburg is better than its Facebook bullies, and we need your help to drop them out. And now I'm going to go switch to watching this remotely and help put my kids to bed. Thank you very much.
You asked from the public? The video recording should have the audio at a later date?
It is being uploaded right now, so yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll continue then. Mr. Blatt?
Hi, Dave Blatt. I'm coming to you both as a citizen of Lunenburg and also the Chair of the Green Committee. I'm going to ask for your folks' help in helping us as the Green Committee use up state funds. We very much enjoyed your former facilities manager. He was involved with the Green Committee, and the amount of funds we were able to provide for the schools. We did such things as multiple lighting upgrades, probably over $100,000 in lighting upgrades, upgrades in mechanical systems, variable speed drives, new water heater, boiler controls, pipe installation, appliances, the nice new oven, the cooler, the refrigerator, weatherization, and training on how to use these systems were all done by funds through the Green Grant with virtually no money having to be laid out by the school committee or the town. We ask that you guys can, you know, help us help you. We need your help in putting together the projects or getting something done so that we can be ready for our fall grant. One of the things that I've talked about this before is the mini-split project. This project is prime. The state wants to fund those. All we need to do is make sure it's done the correct way, and the correct wording is the right way, and we believe that that will go over with flying colors. We have up to $200,000 that we get asked from the state in this round alone that's available. We would like to be able to use all of that $200,000 because they'd like to give us, our little town of Lunenburg, that money. So please help me, help you, help the town, and get things done around that you would like to get done in the facilities, in the buildings, and other upgrades that you need to keep these schools and the students in it happy.
Ms. Chair?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair? Can I just ask, because this is pertinent to the conversation that we had at our last meeting. Have we resolved the issue around the reimbursements for the primary school mini-splits? Mr. Blatt spoke at a school committee meeting, excuse me, a select board meeting a few weeks ago, and made a statement that there was reimbursement money available for mini-splits. And then we received conflicting information a couple of weeks ago in our meeting, and I'm just wondering if that's been resolved.
I would turn that over to the superintendent if you'd like to respond.
I don't have an answer for you at this time. I'll follow up with Mr. Hebe.
Oh, Mr. Chair, can I ask a question? When are the fall deadlines? What are we talking for fall?
So we are looking to try to have some, we had sent some notices out to both the facilities directors and other directors in town that we were looking to have by August 15, a list of possible projects. I know that's just around the corner. I know that you've had folks come through to try to look at projects. By September 15, we're looking to have the data together, which we think is a much more viable number. And then they have to be, you know, in early October, we have to be able to submit it.
Okay.
We'll be awarded the grants probably in February, and as long as they're used within the year, the money is ours.
Okay. How often does the Green Communities Task Board meet?
We meet once a month.
Once a month. Mr. Chair, has Mr. Hebe been going to the meetings? Have we been?
He's been invited to meetings. He has attended, you know, several of the meetings. It's just, it's a matter of, I believe, that's why Maskin failed. I believe that he's working, he's trying to get his hands around the facility, he's trying to get projects done. But we need you guys, your guys' help to help, to allow him or to direct him to try to use more of the funds that might be available. I say Mr. Long was amazing at doing those little things. So he pretty much, for about four years, the only project getting done was yours. That's about it.
When is your next meeting?
Our next meeting is going to be, we're going to go to meet two weeks, not next Monday, but the following Monday, so after the 15.
Okay. You still have another minute. Thank you. I appreciate you answering the questions.
No problem. I'll take as much time as you want to give me, but if there's questions, I'm happy to answer them. Because like I said, we need your help with putting this together.
Yeah, thank you for your work on this and the Green Communities, and also, yeah, we definitely want Mr. Hebe to be the representative, but obviously you can reach out to the superintendent too or myself with concerns or questions.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Any other public comment from the public?
Mr. Chair, I think that there are people on Zoom who came here specifically for public comment, and I think that there's a strong possibility that this needs to get resolved before we move forward, or we need to tell them that it's not going to get resolved, and if they want us to be here to public comment, to come here.
Zoom has a phone option.
But I don't think that the issue is a Zoom issue.
Somebody just asked if it's on yet or if the media started, so...
I think that we either need to pause and resolve this issue or we need to tell people that we're going to take down Zoom and you come here and, you know. Protocol is clear.
Are we able to unmute people so that they can make a public comment?
I feel like we'll need to display it up here so I can unplug it and we can do our normal meeting minus the issue.
I'm just wondering if the option is available for public comment from?
It will be if I unplug this and we turn that back on, then we won't be getting this and that.
Okay, let's try that and see if we can make a public comment from Zoom.
I think it's more important to hear the public comment. Sorry, I lost it.
I was calling the APT. Do you want to ask somebody from Zoom and see if they can unmute themselves?
Just checking on audio. Can you hear us on Zoom?
Yes, we can.
Okay, at this time, we are having public comment. Public comment is open to the public at this time. As a reminder, please do not listen to names of personnel or names of students during public comment. Please raise your hand or virtual hand if you'd like to make a public comment.
Recording in progress.
I'll just try to put a different audio on yours.
Is there anyone on Zoom that has a public comment? You can unmute yourself, raise your hand, or raise your virtual hand. Not seeing any at this time. Just double-checking, just due to the technical difficulties earlier, I'll make sure people have the opportunity for public comment if they wish. Is there anyone with public comment? All right, same done. I'm going to turn it over to your public comment from the committee. Is there any public comment from the committee?
I have a comment. I'm not going to comment if I don't have to, because I'm going to do it myself.
How's that?
No, it's still not working.
Let's try that. Testing.
Dr. Brian, is it coming through your computer?
It is.
Yeah, except my microphone is off, or the sound is all the way down here.
Do you want to share?
My Zoom is off.
Do you want to transfer hosts to me, and I can let people in? And then maybe you turn yours off?
Testing.
There's got to be a way to mute the computer. Maybe Terry?
On Zoom, they should give you audio options, turn on your headphones, and set up the speaker.
Testing. Testing. All right, I think we're okay.
All right.
The shot. Mr. Beardmore?
May need a little more than three minutes. When I was appointed to the school committee two years ago, I outlined four things that I wanted to focus on as a school committee member. In summary, they were student achievement, budget, facilities, and community engagement. And I think that, you know, my microphone is blinking on me. I think that, I think that we've made some progress in all those areas, but not enough in any of them. And as the events of this past weekend unfolded, I was packing up to go camping with my son this weekend. I started to think, what is this going to do relative to moving the ball on student achievement, facilities, budget, community engagement? And my honest assessment was, probably not going to help. Although I can tell you that I didn't foresee what was actually going to occur. But I thought it would. I thought something was going to happen, because I've lived here for a long time, and I can tell you point-blank that racism and general intolerance in Lunenburg is not a new thing. One of my classmates commented on Facebook this weekend, and he was right. There are more people in my class that regularly use the N-word than there were minorities in my class. So this isn't a new thing. But we've made progress in Lunenburg over the years. We've made extraordinary progress. When I landed on the school committee, I was introduced to the term SEL, Social Emotional Learning. And I can tell you that when I joined, I didn't know what SEL meant. I had no idea. But I sat back and listened, and I read the research that was presented to me and the clear facts about the climate in our schools and whether our students felt safe or not and accepted or not. And I was convinced that there was an issue that needed to be addressed. And there were a small group of parents that objected to it, and they brought the issue multiple times to school committee meetings. And there was an open and honest and respectful debate about it at the time. I disagreed with those who had a problem with the SEL curriculum. But I have great respect for those people, and I, you know, I regularly speak with them at town meetings and those kinds of things. What happened this weekend was not that. And it reflected a lack of curiosity about the process, a lack of interest in the merits of the candidate who was selected, a lack of confidence in the members of the community that participated in that selection, a complete disregard for our actual curriculum that doesn't mention white privilege or CRT anywhere in the curriculum or the role that the person was hired for. It did bring up sexual preference, religion, all kinds of innuendo relative to postings that have been made online about that individual. And surprise, surprise, that individual decided not to come here. I've sat here for two years and boasted about Lunenburg, and we joked that I'm a townie, and I know this place pretty well. I didn't know it as well as I thought I knew it, and I am thoroughly disappointed. This was an unforced error. I probably, frankly, knowing what I know now, would not have made the hire simply because of the other priorities that are on my list. And we need to build consensus. We need to build community. We need to bring people together. And I'm not going to convince anybody of my views when it comes to social justice. And frankly, I lean to the left. I lean into those issues, but I'm not going to convince anybody, and frankly, I don't have the time or energy to do it. But I do want to move the ball forward, and I'm very worried about our ability to retain and attract qualified personnel. I believe in concepts like the Medici effect, that says you need a diverse group to come to the best solutions. I believe that our students who are of minority groups need to have people around them in the faculty that empathize with who they are and act or look like them. And I'm worried that we will not be able to do that as well as we have in the past. The upside of this is that I think I'm in the majority, significantly in the majority. But there is an unsilent minority who feels very empowered. This is my town, and I'm not going to tolerate that. And if that means stepping beyond the bounds of my position on the school committee, I will do that. But what occurred this weekend, it was everybody's right to say whatever they wanted to say, but it was not in good taste. It was disrespectful of this committee and our leadership, and people need to be called out and asked to defend their positions. They're welcome to do it right here and on the Zoom or anywhere else for that matter. But get ready, because I'm done with being silent and listening to that just because the rules say as a school committee member that I need to make my statements here. People of a like mind need to confront this anywhere and everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beardmore. Any other public comment from the committee? Thank you. I had a short statement. I encourage those who have specific concerns about curriculum, new hires, or other matters to engage directly with our administration rather than sharing concerns on social media. Direct communication with the administration helps ensure that concerns are addressed more effectively and constructively. We can work together respectfully to ensure the best educational experience for all students in our community. Next item on the agenda is review and improvements. We have regular session minutes from May 22, 2024, revised in June 12, 2024, and a special session revised March 11, 2024. Is there any questions or comments or corrections? I'll look for a motion or motions.
Motion to approve the minutes of June 12 and March 11?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the June 12 and March 11 minutes?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Is there a motion for the May 22 minutes?
I can move to approve the regular session minutes of May 22.
Were those in our, were those in the folder?
They are in the last meetings folder, July 25. We put a hold on those for this meeting? Mr. Beardmore was absent that meeting?
Yep.
Oh, that was the one I had asked for changes to the minutes. Are we not, I had forwarded those to this?
I have it last revised on July 23.
Yeah, they have not been revised with the revisions I asked for.
So we can table those minutes?
I can withdraw my motion.
Thank you. All right, moving along on the agenda, review and proof warrants. Warrant total, July 22, 2024, was $453,515.55. Is there any questions, concerns, or comments on the warrants? Is there a motion for that? All right, moving on to new business, discussion on finance best practices.
So at this time, I would invite Mr. Andy Parquet and Dr. Livingston to come up to the table.
So you want to stay? Good evening. I'm Andy Parquet, President and CEO of TMS. This is our associate Paul Lewis, and he's been helping you out as you transition. We just have a brief 90-minute presentation. When I sat down in the power block, and I'm not sure if we're going to be able to show that and display so that I can walk you through it, or do I need to pull it up? I guess it would be my question.
We have it. We each have a copy, but...
We're going to see if we can get it up on the...
You can probably just connect to a computer that's not connected to Zoom.
So while we're doing that, just to give a brief background. So we, TMS was formed in 2006. Prior to that, I was the lead finance examiner for what I formerly called the dreaded but now defunct Office of Educational Quality and Accountability, if you remember the EQA. And we formed TMS out of the reviews and what we saw as I was a member of over 60 reviews of school districts in the state. I oversaw all the finance examiners for the agency, and I did all the financial analysis for the agency as a whole, which entailed... uh, for the agency as a whole, which entailed reviewing over 120 school districts in its, uh, as the agency existed. Um, prior to that, I've been a business manager, director of finance and operations, uh, certified government accountant by the Association of Government Accountants, uh, have a DESI licensure for school business administrator. So this presentation, what we have here is an outsourced that we've done for clients, um, from taking the best practices that we've seen from both the reviews, from the agency, from the work we've done, uh, with clients, and from admittedly recommended best practices from the alphabet soup that you will see of organizations that we belong to regarding when it comes to budgeting and management of school finances in particular. So now that I see we have it, let's start the slideshow. And I mean, we have like Q and A, so, you know, I, I, this is an overview, but it's really, I would like to have it as a discussion. So there's Q and A at the end, but by all means, Paul's gonna jump in regarding both from his experience and what it is that's going on here in Lunenburg. Uh, and just have a discussion regarding it, and, uh, let's hit the road. So as I said, uh, we're gonna be covering budget development, financial management, and any other information that might come up as far as like reporting and policies and what have you. So these practices I was saying in the next slide are coming from the organizations that were members of, Association of Government Accountants, Government Finance Officers Association, ASBO, MASBO, and honestly, from audits from both the reviews that we've done and audits of our existing clients. Because auditors will come in and as part of their review, they'll, in their management letters, they'll put in recommendations from various, you know, the clients that they reviewed, things that they've seen operation that could improve management of districts, cities, and towns as well. So to start off with, as far as like budget development goes, there are primarily, and this is somewhat esoteric, there are three concepts when it comes to budget development. There's needs-based budgeting, which again, states it's pretty obvious. What are your needs? You know, and you end up presenting the budget to meet your needs. You have level service, which is what are your current services? And what's it gonna take to fund your level services? And then I listed as third, and it's one of the options that I would never like to see done. It's very drastic, would be the level funding, which is, you know, no, no room for increase based on no contractual obligations and or, uh, you know, inflationary factors. So from our point of view, you know, we recommend stating the obvious that you do needs-based budgeting. And believe it or not, you know, we've had clients that when we've gone through the budget development process, and when the superintendent administration sees what the total increase would be, the sticker shock effect is, we can't go public with that. And our response is, why? You know, the community needs to know. Because if your decisions and your needs are based on data, which are the data being beyond test scores. So what is it that you truly need to provide an indication in your community? Okay, then if it, if it's us, then you get the sticker shock. That's when the budget development process and the negotiations you have with city or town officials, school committee as well, to start prioritizing what it is that you want to do when it comes to putting forward the recommended budget to the town. The next slide. So we also, when it comes to building a budget, you know, one of the things in the workshops I've done, and, you know, I've always asked school committee members, you know, how much does it take to run your schools? And sometimes, you know, I've seen growth, I'll say, in your colleagues that more often than not, a lot of the times, they've gone just to the town number. You know, but as we all know, there are grants and revolving accounts, and there are expenditures that are on the town side that are, that go to funding schools. So we have here just a brief slide about you have the school committee's local budget, your other funding sources, and then what are the expenses on the town and the true cost of your education are the sum total of those three. So, you know, the, it's divided really into the two sections. Both the school community controls and the expenses on the town side that for like, where the town controls. Now, there are some organizations, some towns that end up shifting, quite honestly, all the expenses over to the school side, including things like the health insurance, retiree insurance, what have you. And their, their view is, you know, if you're gonna be hiring more people, it's just, you know, you're gonna end up having to be the one to ultimately, you know, cover that if your insurance costs are gonna go over budget. But either way, what's key to this, and it's not here, and I know Paul and I had discussions regarding, um, the ways, the communication relationships between the school and the town side is key to success. We all know that there's only a, an, a finite amount of money in the, in the budget pie here in Lunenburg and anywhere and stuff. But let's have a discussion as to what is, the priorities are as a whole.
So when you say that you should put forth a needs-based budget, are you saying that from the perspective of a business manager who is concerned about dollars and cents? Or are you saying that as somebody who has taken a leadership role in the school, which forces you to recognize local political necessities?
I would say honestly, even though we're coming from the finance guy, um, it shouldn't be finance driven. Your needs are based on what your building administrators, program directors, and what it is that you know are needed for the students here in Lunenburg. So what is the cost of that for your school district? You, that obviously the finance side would be working with the administration. That's okay, so we're gonna need to adopt a new curriculum in, in math. Okay, so then let's start gathering that information and building together. Are there other funding sources out there that we're gonna use to potentially off, potentially offset these costs? So, you know, I'll be honest with you, the dollar shouldn't drive. It should be your priorities as a community. What is it that you want for education in Lunenburg that drives your budget?
But if your, if your community's answer to what we want out of education is cheap, then it's hard to say that those things are different.
Go ahead, you wanna start your.
I think, um, I always thought of myself studying as a teacher and educator, as an educator that came with a business perspective. And certainly recognizing what you're saying, but also recognizing the fact that you are the board in town responsible for the children's growth and development. And taking that perspective, ultimately first, obviously, reality's hit, traces have to be made. But you have a responsibility to look at it from what they need. You also then have the responsibility to look at it from what does the town need to hear about? And what do they need to hear would be lost if they make? And you have to then bring a budget into that level. But I think sometimes it's forgotten that it goes on so long that people forget sometimes what the real needs are. And we just get into a, a mindset of, well, they want cheap. Well, you know, maybe, maybe the community's changing. And I think another aspect that I've heard happening here in Lunenburg that is critical in any community is the planning component. I've heard there's a, a new budget committee that's starting to think forward. I think whether it's the school department, the highway department, or the police department, fire, any town department, everyone has to be at the table to understand that we aren't one group pitted against another. We are, as said earlier, the community of Lunenburg. And the community of Lunenburg has to passionately say, what do they want together? And if, if we're looking forward to, you know, unfortunately, oftentimes, oftentimes, the, um, the increases that are necessary that are happening at our own homes, we have to start to consider what are the needs for the community? We can't function in a school department without a good fire department, without a good police department, without a good highway department, a good health department, all those different kinds of things. And they all have needs, and we all can't, if we have 10 hot dogs, we're not gonna feed 11 children. We all understand that. But how do we come together and say in a planful way, what's the financial plan for the district? Most districts come forward with a financial plan that is, oh, they put, they put out too much. We have to pull them back. They cut it, and finally, somebody feels they've won a loss, or actually, nobody feels they've won a loss. What if we had a way that we were looking at a three-to-five-year cycle? And talking about, how do we balance these needs across? And how are we upfront with our community and have a conversation with the community about how do we lay these ideas out? We need a new library, we need a new school, we need, we need to add a curriculum, we need to do health officer. We need, you know, how, how are those things done in a planful, thoughtful way for the community's planning aspect? To me, that's the critical piece of what's often lost when we look in Massachusetts and in New England at the annual fiscal year budget. It's constraining, it's confining, it produces, you know, tension and fights. We start planning for our own child's college education when at birth. You know, the first $25 check goes into our savings account. What do we do for a town? Because we have to support all aspects of the town, of which the schools are a very critical vital one. Obviously, that's why we're all here. But there are other pieces too, and it can be done thoughtfully. If you look at strong communities that have done this in the past, they plan three to five years, they talk about, well, we're gonna do an override now. But we, we really think that's what lasts for three or four, you know, maybe even five years. And the first, you know, we're gonna have maybe a little less money, but that's when we, you know, might buy a new dump truck. Or we might buy some, some extra books or a new curriculum or something. And then gradually, that starts taking over, the staff pieces that start to rise up against us.
Does that work?
Yeah, it does.
Have you done this in districts successfully?
Done in other communities, definitely. And the communities that are very successful.
Has it been communities like ours with our culture?
You're, you're no different than most of these others, they had to start somewhere also.
This is a big, it would be a big budgeting cultural shift.
Planning isn't as much of a shift.
I think it would be.
Well, I mean, it sounds like you have, I would, I understand.
We want to.
Of course, yeah, I think of this, it sounds like this budget committee that's formed would be a key avenue. Potentially start to get that.
I mean, we have a, we have a structure in Lunenburg to do what you're talking about. Our charter calls for our town manager to, to publish and present a fiscal forecast for the town that includes needs input from all of the departments. And for many years, it was done on a pro forma basis, it was total apportionment and without any consideration for needs. My first year, I believe, on the finance committee, we said, no, we need, we need needs input on this. The superintendent actually did more or less what you're describing, and all hell broke loose. You know, I, I, so I, I understand your point.
Yep.
But I, I think that it has to be more than, there has to be a, there has to be a community movement behind this. It's not five members of a school committee, a superintendent saying, this year, we're gonna submit a three-year plan. Because you've done it and it hasn't worked. It, it actually has, it has been attempted.
I respect that, and I appreciate that, and applaud you for, you know, uh, say attempting it, but it's a thing that gets to the, you know, the cliche of communication. You know, it's just gotta be on the tape. And, you know, regarding your, we had one of our clients in the western, western part of the state that actually, you know, we were sitting around, and, you know, I was at this meeting where it was, as Paul was mentioning, the DPW director, the chief of police, the fire chief, and they're saying, you know, we didn't even put forward our needs. You know, it's like, so our, my point, and again, I'm talking about, you know, my other story, a quick aside, I'll finish this one first, was that, you know, we said, well, how is it then that the, those that decide, town meeting, know what exactly needs? We all need to be realistic that the needs are gonna outweigh what it is that the community could potentially fund. But the needs need to be known out there. That's all we're saying, is like, everybody needs to know, whether it's school, DPW, council agent, what have you. You know, so, you know, we were saying to the, the town officials at this meeting in this western community was, you know, we're not doing any amount of service here by not even getting, communicating to the town fathers, to the, the first selectmen, the, you know, the, the board of selectmen, the board of finance regarding what it is that the needs are for all the departments.
So state the needs, it's important to state the needs, even if the town doesn't wanna meet the needs. State them so that voters are aware.
Correct.
And I think I heard you say at the start, that that's where you're kind of starting at, needs-based budgeting, and then go from there.
Correct. Yes, and then my other story, I'll say that I'm the son of a 35-year police officer who was chief of police in, in a city in Western Mass. And, uh, I was very interested in the city politics, and I would go during budget development time. And he would go to present his budget, and then he would go and be sitting at a school department's budget, his council and agent budget, and, you know, and his view was to, because if we don't get the word out that we are as possibly one community here supporting all of us. And he was somewhat tongue-in-cheek regarding some of his things, and the police officer sense of humor to some extent. And he would say, he would say, look, if you don't fund the school's budget regarding, you know, after-school activities or what have you and stuff, and as an inner-city community, he would say, I'm gonna need my overtime budget increased. Where do you want your dollars to go? Do you want enrichment for kids to keep them off the streets? Or do you wanna pay cops overtime? You know, so was that, you know, that's kind of, that stuck in my mind, you know. He was a unique chief, you know, he was a unique police officer, you know.
I know, it's very.
Yeah, so cultures are very difficult things to change, but it has to start somewhere. And I have a sense that this community is a changing community, that it's, it's changing its, its thought process. And, you know, I think it's time, I think it's ready to, it has to start somewhere. And it's not easy, it's hard work.
I think you're right, I think the, the challenge, and this is ultimately a balance, and ultimately, we all know that we're gonna get down to February and March, and we're gonna be arguing over much smaller numbers than what the needs-based budget is. I think the reality is, is that we all kind of haven't gone through what we just went through last year. There's a bit of PTSD associated with that, but also the reality that that's where we're gonna be spending our time and energy again, right? Is, is sharpening pencils based on limited funds. And we are in a changing community, that, I think that that's true. But we can't leave those, frankly, the, the needs that have been articulated amongst the taxpayers that don't have the economic wherewithal to fund the total needs of the town cannot be ignored and cannot be left behind. And, and that is, you know, really where the rubber meets the road, right? We, we deliberated this past year around an override number. That number could have been a lot bigger number, some, you would argue it should have been. But it was based on, there was some political calculus associated with that, right? It wasn't based, it was based on where we were relative to funding, you know, to a funding line on a graph, right? It wasn't really based on need. And, but nevertheless, we were able to get more than we otherwise would have gotten had we not taken that approach. So I hear what you're saying, I, I'm just, I'm a little too grounded in in the reality of the recent past.
Sure, and then, and yeah, once reality happens, you know, then all debts are off, I, I, we get that. It's just, you know, I'm coming from even, you know, saying, even though the numbers got the finance back and stuff, it's like, it's more the communication of what it is that the needs are. You know, that it need, you know, uh, it needs to get up and, and, you know, and so.
That's fair.
So it's stating the needs, so the needs are out there. The voters or the town chooses not to meet the needs, at least they've been stated. And it's obvious what is not being met, as opposed to just assuming school gets as much money as last year, just be happy with that, you guys are doing fine. So I think, I think it makes sense, although the cultural change that this would require is terrifying.
Sure, absolutely. That's why I'm glad you're there and here. Here, we go to the next slide. So now we're on to, but we're all set with the budget development. And that was a great discussion, I'd say that's one of the best discussions I have to tell you that I've had regarding, you know, I usually spend the least amount of time on the budget development because people kind of like, yeah, we, we know we're processing, we're gonna get what we get, whatever. We're gonna have some, so, uh, now we're talking budgets built, developed, approved, now the rubber's hitting the road. And so some of the things that we like to see are administrators with budget authority, they're the ones that are in charge of managing their program, schools, departments, budgets. We've gone into districts where, you know, uh, the, the, the way it worked was, you know, the business office had final say over everything. And yes, I understand, and, you know, some of what can keep business managers up at night are, you know, budgets running off the rails for whatever reason, and the quote-unquote lack of controls. Well, there are some things that we'll get to. Well, there are some things that we'll get to, some solid, simple internal control structures that should alleviate any of those concerns. But one of our former vice presidents, who was a former curriculum director, would always like to say, you know, the business office shouldn't be making educational decisions. And we've gone into districts where that's been the case. And it's like, our job in the business office is to make sure that decision-makers, building administrators with budget and program authority, program administrators with budget authority, the grants overseers, what have you, that they have access to, whether it's direct access through the financial accounting system, or they get reports from this, the business office, to their budgets, and they make the decisions. Even to the point of, we're talking like budget changers, we would have, no one in districts would see, you know, potentially their textbook line is, you know, two thousand dollars negative. And then they would, you know, business manager, we would be told, oh, the business manager would then just take the money out of the general supply line, and my response is always, well, by whom I know that the businessman, that principal might wanna take it from their other instructional materials line or something, and use it, you know. So we shouldn't be the ones making those types of decisions. So it is important that administrators with budget authority have access to as accurate and as real-time information as possible.
And it goes back to nineteen ninety-three with education reform law that, that spoke to thirty years ago, that, you know, cost center damages, as I call them, should now control under their budget. And to this day, as Andy says, many times, it's the business manager making the decision. That can be, our job is to give them the report so they know what money they have, and hold them then accountable to spend within that amount of money. The difference, again, will shift, shift to culture.
And then just some of the legislative things, purchases of goods and services should be done using prior-approved purchases. That to me is one of the things that's a very simple budgetary control measure. And, you know, again, everything that is non-salary as far as that can be, should be done on, you know, pre-approved purchases. And I know it sounds like a, you know, could be a tedious process, but then again, it goes to, you know, one of the things that I always like to say is, school, school administration, school districts, school committees, we should be able to run one report, and that report should be from July one to June thirty. And if that last number on the lower right-hand corner of the last page is a positive number, we're good. If that number is in the red or has a bracket around it, a negative or a positive or something, then we need to talk. It doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, we're, in a, in a crisis, it would just require you to review whether there are encumbrances that are no longer needed, you know, are there other funding sources that we need to, you know, the funds haven't come in yet, so, you know, there are other things and stuff. But, you know, for management purposes, it really should be one report run for any time, July one to June thirty. You know, and that's the same thing that goes to the next thing regarding contractual salaries being encumbered, the encumbrances in salaries, again, when, once, as close as, salaries are always in flux because of whether it's personnel changes, people come and go, maternity leaves or what have you. But if you have a solid encumbrance system for your salaries, it's that type of thing where, you know, I like to call it the Ron Popeo method of budgeting, you know, you set it and forget, you know, it's a thing where you should be able to, for all intents and purposes, just keep running that one report anytime you want and see. You know, so it goes to, again, a very systematic approach to how it is that you do your, your salaries. Ideally, the encumbrances should be through the accounting system, some accounting systems aren't set up to do so, you know, but it's, it's something where there are other ways that it can be done, you know, outside on Excel.
That is something we're putting in place for this community, we have not had it in place in Lunenburg. And, you know, many of these things of the control process between the, the town offices and the school, I have to mention that the new town accountant is outstanding and is very, very wonderful to work with, an understanding of the needs of all, not just the school department.
Can I just ask a quick question and bear with me, it's probably a soundly stupid question, and hopefully it goes in that direction. When you talk about encumbrances, I think of encumbered funds as we move from one fiscal year to the next. That's not what you're talking about here.
It, it's both, well, the one fiscal year to the next, that you have to encumber the fund so that it's charged to the correct year.
Right.
But the encumbrance can happen during the actual fiscal year, so it's, an encumbrance is a reserve. It's in a sense of, you are, you are committing these funds that I get paid sixty thousand dollars a year out of this one salary line. So once the budget starts, there's your original budget of sixty thousand dollars in that line item. You haven't paid me yet, but we know you're gonna pay me.
Yeah, you're kinda following the.
Exactly, you know, so that there's, so there's sixty thousand dollars encumbered, so then that means that your available balance in that line is zero.
So how is that different from what we're doing now? Because we get these quarterly reports and say, you know, I'm just making up ridiculous numbers, but, you know, custodians in the high school, there's three hundred thousand dollars for the year, and we're kinda bouncing the ball along the year. We get a quarterly financial report that says, we're over, we're under, we gotta transfer funds. Is that, is that different than what you're, you're saying?
Based on the fact that you're implementing encumbrances for payrolls, that process for those quarterly reports is very manually intensive.
Okay.
And has to be done in a sense off the, off the system. When you have a robust system like Munis, you shouldn't let the system do the work.
Okay, fair, totally.
Absolutely.
Is there a reason Munis isn't doing the work for us now?
Well, we have not been using it as fully yet, in fact, we're using it.
It's an older version.
And the new town accountant is aware of that, wants to move in that direction. And ultimately understands that you, as a school committee, you are responsible for the management of your budget, not, not town offices and not others. And, you know, the report that I gave you with the transfer a few months ago, you know, very, in very rough times, but, you know, will be a similar kind of report that you get a year-to-date report that will show what has already been spent from your budgeted amount, what is incumbent, meaning that's already committed, and what's left. So that when we're making transitions or transfers, it will be based on what's spent plus the encumbrance, what's omitted to change that. And, and I think that's, those are some of the things that just, I'm sort of adding in.
It should be on, but the fact that it's currently manual is.
Right, but we're bringing it into the strength process here.
You had mentioned Excel for budgeting, we had questions from finance committee and other members of the public. Is there other avenues of doing budgeting, or is it very popular for Excel to be used? Can you just expand on that?
Munis has a budget development module that, you know, other clients of ours use. Some clients of ours still use the Excel because of whether it's just the cliche of it's the way it's always been done. We like to, and, and one of the struggles with Munis, it's, it's a fact of, if you look and see like our all-funds approach, we end up showing, you know, just a brief descriptions, you know. We have, our budget documents that we use a lot of times are like on eight-and-a-half by fourteen paper, because we'll end up having the entire budget, an all-funds column, the local appropriated column, and then every single grant and revolving account that the district has, and how is it that we're gonna fund to quote-unquote back into that local budget column. The, the versions of Munis that I have used does not have that necessarily ability to present it that way. So it's one of those things where districts might wanna do some of their budget development in something that is more easy to manipulate, and then upload it into Munis. Other districts that we've worked in, Munis's budget development module, they find effective, they're not too good in the information that they have. So it comes back to the culture as to what is it that you wanna see as far as when time comes to present your budget.
And one of the, one of the drivers for that question is, is that we have a lot of folks, you know, particularly on the finance committee, that are very analytical, but other members of this committee as well. The data in, in Excel is, you know, point-in-time data, and you can't do trending analysis or that kinda thing. There's no historical data generally, right? It's very limited in terms of any kind of analytics that you can bring to bear to really understand what's happening over, over a period of time. And, you know, so I think part of the ask there is, is it something that, you know, can we, can we use tools that allow for exporting data in a way that some level of analytics can be applied?
Yeah, I can tell you.
Clearly today, we don't have that in our current Excel approach.
Are the districts that, you know, they'll, and it's somewhat of a, I'll say without a word, they'll take, their, uh, their information lies in Excel, and then I should say in Munis, excuse me. They'll export the information in Munis, and Munis has three years of history. You know, so they'll export the three years of history, they'll end up putting it into, we'll end up putting it into an Excel document so that you can do exactly what I'm saying, the trend analysis. We'll end up adding the column for whatever fiscal year we're building, and then we'll put it back into Munis, you know, for that the town officials can then use.
And the problem, you know, one of the problems that we experienced this year is the, you know, the hourly human factor, right? And, and, you know, manipulating multiple Excel spreadsheets and version control and hidden fields and, you know, like, we, we lost a lot of hours just based on that.
That's why using the system is the strongest way to stay on track. Because when you don't use the system as effectively as it can or should be used, you've got common error, you know, human error.
The rec and PO process, does that align with our current practices?
Lunenburg doesn't have a requisition module in the Munis, but they do. No, they, they do have a PO module, so people put in POs and you can do a workflow of approvals from the, you know, the admin and the cost center will put in the PO. It then is approved by the cost center, it is very to the principal, then it can go to the superintendent, it can go to the business manager, you know, you can do that workflow, and that's something we're adjusting as well, coming down into the form.
The key thing with that process regarding, and we, you know, our big thing is the approval. So if there is, you know, I'm not gonna say, I'll grant some places, as Paul's describing, might not have the formal requisition component to it. It is more so the, you know, some people go in and just start writing and typing in an actual purchase order, you know, which is fine, as long as that workflow that Paul's describing, you have the levels of approval to get it to the point of, okay, we, the purchase order has now been reviewed by the levels that we require for approval, and then we click, you know, approve this batch of purchase orders, and then the formal purchase order gets generated with an official number attached.
And, and you check, the approval process allows it to be checked for, for maybe procurement regulations of chapter thirty B and bidding requirements of the, all those kinds of things. We'll be reviewing those with the leadership of the schools, it's called, you know, this before school starts also.
This goes again, it's great, we must talk about this. So our big thing is the prior approval. You know, we have, and this is where districts can get themselves into trouble. Uh, you know, and I've had people in business office staff have come in to me and said that, you know, I got this invoice, but there's no purchase order, so, you know, we had superintendents say that we need to send that, those goods back, if, you know, if they're gonna be that much of a, you know, a stickler about it. I'm, as much as I wanna be stickler about it, it's, you know, to me, I, I always say that's part of your evaluation of that administrator if they then, uh, purchased that, but circumvented the approval process, you know. But the thing about it is, you know, I've always talked to the staff, oh, so let's play this out. So we've got an invoice of the goods that have already been received. You're gonna end up having a person go in through that whole purchase order approval process. The purchase order that gets generated, if it doesn't get sent to the vendor, it's just gonna ultimately then be canceled because you're gonna end up paying that bill. So it shouldn't happen, but when it does, you know, obviously, that's an administrator thing to talk about, but, you know, it's a thing of just, okay, have them sign off on approving it, make sure that there are funds available in the line, you know, and then go forward, but, you know, uh, one of the things again, my father mentioned to me, I'm a big fan of the seven Ps of the military, you know, proper prior planning prevents pretty poor performance. And there's a different version.
That's Cleveland.
That's right, that's right, so, but all kidding aside, it truly is, you know, it's something that when I first entered this industry, he, he told me that, he said, and it's something that, when you think about it, you know, and purchase orders are, they're just a budgetary control method, you know, so they can be estimated. You can use blanket purchase orders if, you know, for your custodial maintenance. If they know they're gonna go to the hardware store and they spend in a year, six thousand dollars is what they've gone for various hardware supplies. Now, go ahead and do a purchase order to Joe's Hardware for six thousand dollars, because then you know that you've at least had that money reserved, so then it goes back to my July one to June thirty report so that you know if you've got any flexibility elsewhere, or if you need to start having discussions about the dreaded budget freeze or what have you and stuff, so, you know, it's, it's just a, a simple budgetary control system. On the personnel, so this where some of the things in, in places that it's taught, uh, Munis has in their system, and all the systems have some variation, it's called a personnel control ledger. And honestly, it's again a thing where, you know, the way I describe it is, you have two hundred staff, there should be a designated number assigned to each staff number. So position number one could be the superintendent, could be the business manager, all the way down to position number two hundred, which is the last position higher. It has so much information potential in there as far as tying it to salary, to budget line, to job description, to things and stuff where, when time comes, when you're dealing with communities that are, have chronic, very transient staff as far as the comings and goings, it helps you just chronically keep track, because honestly, it can be a bit of a bear to keep track of the, the number of staff changes that occur during a year. And so, you know, when you have a personnel control system in place, you end up knowing that, you know, we have two hundred staff, and so this year's budget development, we're gonna be asking for two more staff. That personnel control ledger should then now just only go up to two hundred two.
Do we have this now?
Munis has the capability, I have not heard that we use it if we have.
Would we have the capability of?
I think it might be a module that they may own, but I don't think it's used as effectively. I know, I think we have employee numbers, but I don't know whether those are assigned by Munis or whether they're assigned. That's, that's an issue of, of, that personnel database that you need to effectively do negotiations, to do budget planning, to do anything, really needs to be expensive, from, you know, first name, last name, all the way to family dog, emergency contact, you know, and some critical things in the middle of, what's the hire date? Well, the hire date could be different than the, you know, the seniority date. The hire date as a paraprofessional could be different than the movement into the seniority column. And according to what your contracts say, the seniority could include the parapaper. So those things, when you're doing budgeting and doing negotiations, to have those all in one personnel database, which we, I'm not, we, we have it all in, in some different places, but it would be nice to bring it together, at least even in Excel, or certainly in a human, you know, human capital management module, like it's called in Munis.
How big of a project would that be to implement?
It's, it's a daunting task.
We started.
We have?
We have, we've started pulling some of that together.
In Excel?
Uh, in, in Excel, yes.
The challenge, what ends up, it's like, one of the things where you almost have to, I have to say, pick and choose your battles, because to end up doing it, you know, you really need to make sure to state the obvious that it's done right. At the, you know, because we've got, we've got one client, it's always seems to be in a western part of the state, that's, you know, that tried to use a personnel control ledger, and it is one of the messiest things that I've seen to the point where I've actually had to tell them, we have to table this. And unfortunately, have to go from, you know, the longevity file, the hire date file, the, you know, degree file and stuff, to compile it all on one, so.
It's a Santa's List, you have to check it once, check it twice, check it five times.
That is good. If created in Excel, is it, can you bring it to Munis at a later date?
Munis, yes, Munis does have the, they would, what end up happening is, you know, you would have it in Excel and then, you know, again, engaging with their implementation consultants, what they call them, stuff, would be to say, here's our, our own version of a personnel control ledger, you know, and then they would end up sending you their formation, their format to, you know, and it's, it's, when districts have done it, you know, and I'll say, even this district that struggled with it, you know, they did exactly what you're talking about, it's really just moving columns to get it in the form that they want to then upload.
Is there a cost associated with that, an extra cost?
Possibly, I would bet there is, there seems to always be, you know.
Is, if it was created within Munis, is that a format that is then, we can export that to Excel at a later date?
Yes, and that's the way what ended up happening, and again, I'll use this district as an example where, you know, they, when we first were hired, and, you know, I asked the question, because I knew they were using Munis, I said, okay, so we're about to begin budget development, and I export the personnel control ledger, absolutely. So I went in and I looked at this, and there were names that were still there, people that weren't, you know, you know, weren't actually in the district, they weren't getting paid, but they were still listed, you know, and so there were positions that, you know, when I was talking with the administration, we haven't had that position at the middle school for five years. You know, so it's things like that where it's like, you know, they're still there, so there was, there's lots of potential cleanup if it's not properly made. You know, so it's things like that where it's like, you know, they're still there, so there was, there's lots of potential cleanup if it's not properly maintained. So, yes, you can ultimately, once it's done, you know, we actually talked with this district about, you might wanna chronically start from scratch, you know, and, and do it, and then, yes, it would be able to, your potentially process to get it correct. And we'll ultimately end up living in the world of Excel, which is fine, it's just not ideal. We're always striving for the.
The advantage of your size is that you don't have, you know, a lot of employees. Hopefully the budget in the future won't do that, but, um, you know, right now you don't have a lot of employees, so it, it's easier to look at and initially start and set up.
You said this three times in three different topics, I wanna make sure that I understand. You think we should be working in UNIS as a starting point?
Have to use the system.
So if we have stuff in Excel, convert it over, if we're making new stuff, start in UNIS?
To the, to the extent that UNIS has the capability of doing it. I mean, sometimes like in terms of the way you looked at your budget, it may not, hey, might do it in a different format, and I don't even know how effective it's in place in.
It goes to like, you, to, like, I'll bring it back to, to repeat regarding the budget development where I mentioned how it is that we do things. We, we end up exporting the historical data out of UNIS into Excel. The school district, three of the school districts that we work with are like, like our format. We have that historical data for comparison purposes. We then have the next year's, what we call the all funds column. We have the, the ultimately local column, and then we have all the grants and revolving accounts that we have that are assigned to each of the lines in the, this, these districts' budget. And then, you know, we back end, so that, again, it's the whole concept of transparency of saying, you know, our ask is twenty eight million dollars, that's the all funds number, but we're asking from the town for twenty five million because we've got three million dollars and all these other funding sources. To my knowledge, from the versions of UNIS that I have used, it does not have that ability to, for budget presentation purposes. But ultimately, when time comes, as far as, you know, so that's why we do the exporting the historical data, so that the town officials and the city in one case, city officials can look at the budget. We'll input the school committee's approved budget into the column in UNIS, so that the city and town officials can do their analysis, what the school was asking for as part of the total city-town budget, you know. And then the school committee will in a sense, take the Excel version and then have their discussions when we're looking at all the funding sources available. How is it that the administration is presenting, they're using their title one, title two, et cetera, you know, and to then get to the number that'll ultimately be asked for the, from the town. But the, the import is to, with a robust system that, that is such as UNIS or any, believe me, uh, we use UNIS, we use a lot of our systems, we're not here selling UNIS and anything and stuff, but when you have an accounting system as robust as it is, you should let that do the work for you. It takes out the human error component that, you know.
A couple of specific examples, uh, right now, the entire teacher payroll is done at the town hall. So any changes that we wanna have made, we send, have to send it in writing, an email. We have to get back that it was made, we send that. It's like a second set of files exist, which, you know, as the superintendent being the keeper of the records by law, and you being the controller of budget, it's awkward that we are, you know, putting that in and maintaining that ourselves. Again, in speaking with a new town accountant, he understands that, and, you know, we're talking about ways we can become effective that way. A simple thing like closing a P O. When a P O is done and it's paid, the invoice is gone, we have to send an email to town hall to close a P O. And then we get an email back that says the P O was closed. When I was first here, you know, back in February, and we started doing some of that, all these emails come flying through and I'm like, oh my God. I, I mean, that, the effectiveness and efficiency for the town hall and for us seems very redundant.
And it's costing the town a lot of money and wasted.
And costs and, and cost of time, and you have management time that could be spent, better spent.
I wanna be sensitive to time, we've got a big agenda here tonight, but I, I, I wanna dig into this topic just a little bit. We have statutory responsibilities when it comes to finance, but in Lunenburg, we share a lot of the operations with a different authority in town. We are also on the state books when it comes to things like how the state calculates per pupil spending. The costs associated with what happens at town hall are proportioned to our per pupil costs when calculating chapter seventy and all this jazz. So, and so we have a stake in this, but not necessarily any authority in it the way our town is currently set up. At least that's my level of understanding. And there are, there are a couple of issues that, that I'm curious about, right? Number one is from a statutory standpoint, are we caught in a catch twenty-two here? You know, like, the, the system that we have currently was put in place over a number of years, there's a history, some of it's not good. But, but I feel like we are being told this is the way it is. But from a statutory standpoint, we control our destiny.
That's correct.
And, and I'm having a hard time kind of resolving that in my head. Here's a, here's a good example. Reimbursements. The town has a reimbursement requirement if a, if a, if a teacher goes out and takes a class and submits that expense once the class is complete for a, for a professional development class. A paid invoice is not sufficient in the town of Lunenburg for reimbursement. A credit card statement or a bank statement from the teacher is required for that reimbursement, that's my understanding. Because the town wants to know that the teacher actually paid the bill, it didn't go into some sort of financing or whatever. And, and my view on this is, who's the town to tell a teacher how to manage their own finances? I feel like this is something that could easily be dealt with by the school committee or through a contract negotiation or that kind of thing. But we're at the mercy of the town when it comes to these policies. And, and I, I don't know what to do, huh? You know, like, is it, do we have to divorce ourselves? Or, 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 or can we, can we implement policy that suits our, our needs?
So if I could just, in that specific example, I could say that that's not even town policy, that's even above. That would be an audit, it would, well, it's also, I was about to say, it's kind of, I don't know if it's insurance or what they used to call the yellow book in Massachusetts regarding the requirements, like, you need to show approval, an invoice showing that a teacher went. Doesn't necessarily mean that that teacher, you know, that reimbursement then could go to somebody else. So you need to have an associated credit card, cancel check or something showing that I went to Paul Livingston's professional development class for two hundred dollars. Here's my credit card statement showing payment to Paul Livingston, two hundred dollars. You know, so there is, there are the, the, let, the requirements statutorily regarding expenses need to show, you know, some form of payment.
That's Massachusetts statute?
Pretty much, I bet every state would have it, but yes, that's a, obviously here.
Okay, because it doesn't exist in the corporate, like, that it's painfully simple and straightforward.
If only we were in the courtroom.
But back to my larger point, like, you know, to what extent do we have the ability to implement our own policies when it comes to some of these procedures?
Well, I would say, I would say, with all, with all due respect to your role, it's procedural. So the discussion should be occurring with superintendent, business office, and town manager, town accountant regarding how can we effectively do our jobs? Because that's what we're talking about really here, this is a best practice about administrative wise. Obviously you oversee administration, oversee the schools, so hence it's a very great discussion to have. But, you know, we're talking procedures and the workings of the systems that are in place. UNIS, the, the communications with town and school, that then would make every administrator here better at doing their jobs more effectively, efficiently, to then communicate any and all information, finding it on that event related to.
It's about reasonableness, you know, all collaborating together.
Specifically, why can't we use UNIS the way that we wanna use UNIS right now? You talked about how you're having to make the P C L system in Excel because we can in UNIS, why not? What's, what's stopping us from using UNIS in the way that we need to use UNIS in order to effectively use it?
If, if, that P C L example in particular, it is a very labor intensive undertaking. So it's a, it's a, it's really a matter of tasking staff that we're.
Okay, but if we wanted to, we could use UNIS in that way?
If they have the module, I don't know whether they have the module. Actually, today, as we're finally closing up this past year, I've started spending more time with that. And I'm about to ask, what can we get out of the payroll system in UNIS? And how much of that might be in the human management module in order to start from? And maybe I'll be pleasantly surprised if it's more than, you know, I might think.
Okay, but we would have access?
We don't have access to the human capital management right now, I hope to over time.
The goal, yeah, it's like the goal being, should we go down this road, we would definitely need access to that, except. Go to the next slide. More of the same, but again, things we've already talked about, about the encumbrances side, encumbrances. You know, after each payroll run, you would see the encumbrance amount reduce and expense, expenditure amount increase. So this gets to again, from where it is as far as your role, in the sense of, like, say, your section three thousand of your school community policy, and that's where your financial management policies lie. So obviously, you know, we talked about, uh, we were gonna obviously ensure that it's following your school community policies, you know, but procedurally, these are the things that we're talking about when time comes for operations, management, and then including reporting, which is the next slide.
The, the other thing that I'm hoping we can at least include more effectively is your DESI chart of accounts has one thousand, two thousand, three thousand, four thousand, five thousand, seven thousand, and nine thousand. I can remember those numbers, one thousand is school committee, if you don't have any money. Twelve hundred is superintendent, fourteen hundred is business management. Two thousand is all instructional, special ed, regular ed, whatever. Three thousand is nursing, athletics, and transportation. Four thousand is all your facilities, utilities, custodians, facilities. And I can go on and describe all of them, you probably know them, but the way we function here is basically through org and object. I get lost in orgs and objects. They're all over the place and there's not a consistency to them. So even if the town has to use org and objects, I would like to start bringing in the one thousand, two thousand, three thousand, because that's easily understood. If you're, if we're making a transfer within, uh, you know, three thousand for transportation, you first look there and try to move the money from there, within there for a four thousand. And it's just, the orgs and objects make your head spin.
You need to go back a, a paragraph.
That's right, org, org is organization. So it is like every line on a front number is, is assigned an organization in UNIS. And it's this, it's a, you know, certain number digit, uh, assigned, and so that, you know, like the nursing at the, the middle school has its own organization. Object is a term in the uniform Massachusetts accounting system that the municipal side need to follow, which are, it's their chart of accounts in a sense, so objects are the expense side. So if your reports, um, I live in both worlds, so fifty one hundred is salaries, fifty two hundred is contracted services. So, you know, what you wanna see, which I know does exist here, is the crosswalk. It's just a matter of the integrity of the DESI codes, which is, you wanna be able to have, run the org object for superintendent salaries that then would have a crosswalk to a chart of account number that would show the DESI or assigned ones or something. You know, that exists, it's just the integrity of that is what we're talking about, making sure that for your purposes, our purposes, being able to live on the DESI side of.
Does it cover them?
It ha, like the report that I saw, it, it has it, it's one of those things too, again, where, you know.
Like to focus more on.
Exactly.
So the, the example that you just gave of going to, going away from the org and objects.
They can still be in the, they can still be in a line, they can still be next to it, but to focus on looking at the eleven hundred, twelve hundreds, three thousand.
So today.
And we have to do our end of the year report in that way.
Today, when we consider, I, I know this is covered in your slides, but when we consider a, a line item transfer because we're underspent in substitute teachers at the high school, but we're overspent in substitute teachers at the middle school, that's an organizational lens, right? But it is important to a certain degree because we have different sets of administrators that are responsible for managing the budget within those areas, and we want some level of accountability and at least visualization of where these funds are going. And, and the way I view this is not all instruction, it's math at the middle school or whatever, right? So, so.
Using the broad categories, when you would see a transfer list, you would see thirty two hundred, one hundred, five, six, seven, whatever, with the name of the account that says, you know, uh, nursing at primary school, nursing at Turkey Hill School. So it would be associated with an account description as well as that number. When I talk about the broad number, it's just that broad category, but there are many things that break that down into the specifics that you're talking about.
Okay, I guess I'd have to see an example to really understand that.
Sure.
It's not, it's not hitting me.
If you ever come to the office, I'm gonna show you one.
I will.
Okay, so we, we talked about like the, your policy seeks quarterly reports. Quarterly reports are fine, again, there's nothing at all wrong with it, if you're comfortable with that as far as information goes, that's fine. I, I wanna, you know, if you have an accounting system with some integrity to it, you know, then there's nothing saying that you couldn't get monthly reports. You know, honestly, it's a thing where, you know, again, I'll say we've had some clients where their, their system has had some issues. But to hear their school committee policy, we have one client down in the South Shore where there were negative encumbrances showing up, but they had to get it in school committee packet and, you know, our staff were struggling, like, what am I supposed to do on that? Well, it's the balance of including the school committee packet, but when time comes to report, we just have to point out, say, you see that, that negative encumbrance there? That's an error, you know, but, you know, we're gonna, we're addressing it, we're looking into it and stuff. So it's just a matter of, you know, what's the comfort level you have as far as keeping up to date with the financial information you have?
What do you recommend?
I, we, most of our clients that we're in, you know, it varies, but I'm a big fan again of monthly. Monthly with the understanding of if it requires training for the school committee, I'll just tell them to read reports, because we don't wanna necessarily end up creating more work for the business office to end up manipulating reports and everything, you know. Next week I'm doing a training with another district of ours regarding how to read reports so that they can just, this district has the business office, we're running three different reports of their local budget. And, you know, we've kind of said enough is enough. Let's do a training on how to read a financial report from your accounting system, and let's all agree that we're just gonna run that one, run one report.
At this point in time, would that be too cumbersome?
Well, and not to, again, this is over my bounds, but you currently have a policy that's important, so you would need to go to your policy.
Not to mention, yeah, not to mention, we're not set up to deliver on it, and, and we're also all volunteers that meet twice a month. So I just, I think that would require some.
Sure, absolutely. This gets to the discussion of the budget transfers. One of our recommendations that I've mentioned in there is, within as, they'll say, like Paul mentioned, those high order DESI function codes, if there are transfers within, it's not altering the integrity of the budget. So administration, when we recommend administration should be able to do that transfer without school committee approval. If there's a transfer between, say, the function codes of one thousand to a two thousand, or the, the, I won't ask Paul to repeat the list, you know. You are altering the intent, what the intent of the original budget was, that should get some form of school committee approval at some time. And again, depending on, we have clients that do budget transfers, they'll even allow the administration to do those transfers quarterly, but then get a report to them that they'll ultimately approve. And then also if you're transferring between salaries and non-salaries, that's also altering the integrity of the, I said, the integrity, the intent of the budget as it was originally approved. And so you would wanna have some sort of review and approval process. You just don't want it to be cumbersome again for administration and honestly for you as well there, you know. We're having a great discussion here, but I like going to school committees where the budget isn't necessarily the hotly discussed topic. Let's talk about the education and programs of what's going on in the schools.
One of the things that, you know, I think our, our current approach is helpful for is exposing things that are going on that we wouldn't otherwise know. Right, so back to my example around the substitute teachers and the difference between one school and another, oh, there's a. Oh, there's a teacher that's in a long-term absence and, you know, like what's going on, you know, out of curiosity or the needs of the kids in that class being met or that kind of thing. Sometimes that surfaces through discussions around why we need to move funds, right? So when we say, you know, power down and not require school committee approval for certain levels of things, in my mind, I'm thinking, at least over the course of the last couple of years, there's been, there's been a lot of information that I've gleaned in terms of just what's going on that has come out of these line item transfer requests and quarterly budget reports, so.
Lastly, we have some links here as far as if you can't sleep. Some of the, there's a link to the actual DESI chart of accounts that gives you the level of detail that is Paul's reference that we have required to report to this data. And then the next one is the DESI, actual end of the year people financial report. So, and my fat fingers again got the GPS, not LP. I apologize about that. So, you know, that goes to what Paul's saying as far as the alignment to the, you know, making sure Luenenberg's chart of accounts are aligned to DESI. And it's one of the things where I always, you know, tease the people in school finance to, please don't add any more function codes to the chart of accounts because it just, you know, makes the, those nuances when time comes for building budgets, just ever so, you know, just another thing we need to add to the list to do.
Any general questions from the committee?
I don't have a general question, but I, I do thank you very much for all this information. This has been a very, very challenging year and, to say the least. And knowing the change in the town hall, both at the finance director level, but also in the town manager level, that that's all been very up in the air. We've been very fortunate to be able to keep an eye on things and that Dr. Livingston was able to interface with the new town accountant as well as he has been able to, who from other accounts as well, is doing a wonderful job. So we thank you for the information. I appreciate it. And I'm looking forward to see if we can tweak some of our peculiarly Luenenberg habits and make them a little bit more expedient.
If I can add, you have a wonderful person in the audience, you do direct the family. He is very smart, having on board, very good.
It's always good when we're doing a nice job. It's leaving it in good hands.
We are very glad to have him.
I have one additional question in relation to Munis. This came up again last night at a select board meeting. It's a continual issue that in my mind, there seems to be no progress being made. And we received a briefing on this several months ago that was alarming. And what I heard from the business manager from the sewer commission last night was, it seemed as if we're getting nowhere on our Munis implementation. And, you know, frankly, I don't think that we as a school committee have asserted ourselves in this at all. So do you have any thoughts or commentary or recommendations on that topic?
I mean, I guess I'd say what we need to, where is the holdup? Because we are actually seeing in some of our other districts that are doing some implementation of different modules in Munis. The company that owns Munis Tyler Technology, they are also struggling as far as their staffing. I don't necessarily say that they fully recovered from the pandemic, but we do. So there could be some things on that end that are holding things up.
I think there are a lot of potential issues that led to the issue. One of it is we like, we skipped like eleven upgrades and went from like version nine to twenty-one or something. And, you know, generally speeding systems aren't designed to do that. And require, you know, some disruption happens associated with that. Last night, it was revealed that the servers that this thing is running on are running at a hundred percent capacity on the processor. So the servers may be, you know, a little underpowered. There's a variety-
They have certain modules because they can have-
There's a variety of different potential issues here. But there's no accountability or plan or end date or delay and a deadline. There's, there's nothing happening that leads me to believe that there's an end, that, you know, there's an end in sight for this thing. And, you know, once again, we have responsibility here, but we also haven't really asserted ourselves either.
It's a challenge. It's, you know, I have to say, it's just take the obvious and I, you know, it's a thing where, I know like in one of our other districts that where it's the district, the city's IT department is responsible for the integrity of the Munis system, including hardware, software, and dealing with their, the service agreement and stuff. So it would require looking to see what is included in any support rings that the town has with Tyler Technologies to see as far as what is not being addressed. Is there, are there things that could be done, you know, underneath that agreement? Does, is it going to require additional funding because of the, you know, whether it's upgrading the servers? If it is not a Munis thing, that's a IT thing in town. You know, so those are the types of things where, you know, if there was a magic bullet, I'd give it to you, you know. But as of right now, you know, there could be, as you're saying, a lot of variables involved where from our point, it would be if it's over, if there's a townwide IT department overseeing it, you know, or whoever is overseeing it, you know, administration could start having discussions. You know, and it's a thing I, I said, we had some challenges with, as I mentioned about the Munis and one of our other clients where, you know, as I described, I go run to mom. You know, and I'll sit here and I'll talk, you know, with the town's finance director and I would talk with her and I would say, where are we? You know, and she would say, you're right, you know, and stuff. And then we would get on Zoom or someone would say, you know, we're still waiting on your implementation plan or whatever. You know, so it's that type of thing of, you know, I would like to think, start internally first before we end up having to, as you said, meet two volunteers, meeting two times a month. This is something that is at the administrative level, that we would like to think administrative, we could be taking care of. Hopefully maybe with new town officials and the finance director and the town manager that that could help things move along.
One thing that's happening, and you guys have alluded to this, is that there's a budget task force. I'm on that budget task force. Some of the things that you've said would help the budget task force clarify recommendations that would be made to individual committees throughout the town government. Would you be willing to either come or send like a, an email that says like, here are things that we recommend? One of the things that Paul said, that always has said that I found interesting was how cumbersome just basic functions are. And I think that, you know, one of the things that the select person who started the committee really focused on was are there ways that we can do things cheaper and more efficient? And it sounds like you're saying, not only can you do this, but you really should be doing this as part of best practices. Would you guys be willing to come and talk or?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thanks.
Sort of this, I just, to clarify also, if there may be the need to spend a nickel to save a dime. You know, we could, knowing what is, we would need, you know, we, the town would need to know, you know, the modules that aren't being used, are there components of modules not being used and so on and so forth. So it's just one of those things where, you know, again, I go to the robust nature that I know that Munis has. And what you're describing now, I would say it's scary, but it's not, not out of the norm. It is, we see it a lot. We see a lot of the, you know, they get the system, you know, it's got a lot and they'll start using the components that they're, that they know they need yearly or what have you. And then they're, you know, oh, but I'm comfortable with our, the way we've been doing X, Y, or Z. You know, and everything from, you know, onboarding staff, oh, we use this module for onboarding. Well, you know, the human resource capital, we have its own onboarding. So let's explore things like that as far as, you know, again, with a robust system that it can be, you know, then use. And it's one of those things where, so, yeah, the long answer, but by all means, you know.
Okay, thank you. With the rising healthcare costs, the town had a healthcare stabilization fund and we had to use that when healthcare costs rose. Have you seen school stabilization funds where if prices and say transportation, things like that, where schools without a stabilization fund?
Well, on my end, the only one that's allowed is the special education stabilization fund. And I, I know communities, you know, I don't advocate quite honestly the creation of it because when you've got other revolving accounts that have the flexibility that could be used for exactly what the sped stabilization fund is, there's nothing saying you can't use a school choice revolving, you know, for special education related expenses. You know, so it's one of those things where why create a fund that has, you know, some, I'll say stipulations to it and also a process in place to go through it when there's already a method in place that has more flexibility than a sped stabilization fund currently has. Doesn't mean that if you want to create one, then you do so. I'm not, you know, that's my personal opinion on it. You know, it's just a matter of, you know, because we have had, when communities have had discussions regarding in that one particular sped stabilization fund, you could already see some of the town officials saying, oh, so wait a second here. So we're going to be able to have some control over that? And to some extent, yes, they do. You know, so it's that sort of thing. It's like, why, why? Again, you're not doing anything devious. You know, it's like if you end up having, you know, say, a high cost expense that happens, that's where you have the discussions at. Do we have the funds available? If so, where is it coming from? Whether it's a budget transfer in the local budget or we need to use more school choice money or whatever that we thought we had? Or do we need to go back to town for supplemental appropriation? You know, so there are those types of things where, you know, from my point of view, you know, a sped stabilization fund in particular, being the only one that is, you know, allowed it. Yeah, go ahead, but why?
Any other questions from the committee? So we do have Dr. Gilson, the director of administration finance here. I didn't know if you had any thing you wanted to add or?
I have to say that these gentlemen are wonderful. One of them is my coach. And so I'm learning a lot, appreciating and growing in terms of understanding every revenue stream that's coming in. I'm on the budget task force and so I'm looking forward to putting the total budget together in a good way.
Thank you.
You're so exciting. Can I raise the start?
We also have the finance committee chair, Mr. Waters in the audience. I didn't know if you had any questions or comments?
I'm going to wait for the budget task force.
Thank you. Dr. Burnham, any questions, comments?
I would echo that TMS, both Dr. Livingston and Mr. Bartlett have been really great in terms of having a resource ready to troubleshoot. Dr. Livingston in particular has done a lot of work directly with our new town finance director. Lots of really good conversation and good progress. And it's been my experience as well that our new town finance director has been really good to work with. So I think we're headed in a, in a good direction. And I too would like to thank them both for being here this evening. Because Dr. Livingston is a retired superintendent and he doesn't have to do night meetings. So I thank you very much for being here with us this evening. It's been a really great thing to have him as a resource. I would offer just one other comment that more recently, we, we seem to not be having quite as much trouble with Munis. The frequency with which Munis is down has been reduced. It's not a daily occurrence anymore. So somebody's been working on something and there seems to be some improvement of late.
Okay, so thank you. Yes. Mr. Livingston's ducked in a really hard time for us in the budget season and that was extremely helpful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you both. That's very helpful.
Thank you.
Enjoy your weekend.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the draft of the FY twenty-six to FY thirty-five capital plan.
All the fun stuff.
So again, this is an early iteration. This is a really early iteration of the plan. We do need to spend a little bit more time finessing this a little bit, I think. But I think it's important to be able to meet the timeline that the capital plan committee has set forward. We need to start having some of this conversation now. It would be helpful to have the thoughts of the committee relative to where we currently have placed projects. If there are, there may be some things that we may want to consider taking out of the capital plan entirely and just not in some other way that is in need on the horizon. So I'll just go through really quickly. So we still have on the list our window safety film at the middle high school. The next phase of the turf field with all of the drainage challenges. We did have the fifty thousand in Arta money that we had the engineering assessment. The report we dropped into the folder. And basically what you see here is sort of the breakout, the cost estimates for repairing part of the complex. It does not include the actual replacement of the turf and track itself, nor does it include repair or replacement of the drainage system under the turf and track. These pieces here really are the complex surrounding the turf and track itself. There is a possibility that if we wanted to, we could lift the track and turf, repair the drainage under it and then reinstall the existing, the current track and turf. To me, that does not make any sense because it is so close to end of life, which the end of life has been accelerated based on all of the constant drainage damage to the turf. So I think it makes more sense. We're going to try to see if we can get somebody to scope the drainage underneath the field itself to figure out if there, if it needs to just be sort of, well, a rooter to clear it or if we can get any other kind of assessment for what is going on underneath the turf. But I don't think that it makes sense for us to attempt to repair the drainage under the turf until we're ready to actually replace the turf, which honestly should be in the next few years anyway.
So my take on this is that we are at end of life on the turf right now.
If anybody had been out there in like the last three weeks, you can see it's all black pellets all over.
And, and we're rapidly running into a safety program issue in that facility. What I became aware of through my conversations and follow-up with you, Dr. Burnham, and the facilities director over the course of the last couple of months, is that the way, there may not be a clog, it just may be a faulty design on the drainage under that track. And for those of you who are not keeping score, we spent fifty thousand dollars in ARPA money that was really initially intended to do the whole thing. Fifty thousand dollars got us to the perimeter of the track, right? The retaining wall and the space down basically as far as the break scale. We need another, I believe, ten thousand dollars is the estimate.
It may, it may cost a little bit less than the ten thousand to get somebody in, to get scopes down there to help us- to, to get scopes down there to help us assess what they think the issue is, if it's something that can be reasonably addressed in a, in a non-destructive and invasive way, right? Without having to lift the turf and track itself in order to do some sort of repair. So we might be able to get an assessment as to whether or not there's a a short-term little bit of improvement that we might be able to gain here. But I'm, I'm not sure that that is gonna be the outcome.
So what I'm leaning into here though is if we do have a design flaw, which I believe we do. Case in point, we have drains that run around the corners of the track, but there aren't drains that run along the sides of the fields. And if you go to most of every other track that I've been to with artificial turf recently, and I did check out a few, they have drains that run the length of the field, not around the ends. And I think that that, as well as just like basic water flow principles are, are, are leading to this puddling and, and water that is now being retained under the turf in a, in a rainstorm. And is leading to the, the pellets, you know, being kind of, you know, being floated out and into interesting patterns along the middle of the track after a rainstorm. My question is, if that's the realization, do we need money to do that design work now? And is that included here?
So we, we can, we can try to scope and see what's going on, right? And see if we can get any kind of assessment. And that's, in the big scheme of things, much smaller money. I would tend to agree with your assessment, Mr. Bearmore, because we, I know that when Mr. Poussetterius here as our facility director, he did scope that out. And we could not figure out one, one, one drain pipe, just, it appeared to just trunk it right into the ground. Not, not that it was collapsed, but that it just, it didn't feed into anything else. And since this was sort of a community effort to, to get this track and turf installed, there aren't, there aren't engineered designs for the drainage system that's under there. So I do think that potentially it, it is inadequate. And I do think it's highly likely that what we really need to do is get a artificial turf company to come out and tell us. If they were gonna install this in a, in a brand-new location, they would have to install drainage underneath. So I think likely what we need to do is get a, a few vendors out that do that work. What would it cost if we were going to fully replace the, the drainage below the turf and install a new turf and track? I, I, because I do think that ultimately that's what we will likely end up having to do. I don't think it's gonna be a minor repair of the existing drainage system underneath.
Nor do I, but I, what I'm getting to here is how do we expedite this? Like we get, we got a ten thousand dollar ask for ARPA money, which I think is reasonable considering where we're at and how far the fifty thousand dollars took us. But I think we should be asking for, you know, funds to do this in FY twenty-seven at our latest, right? And I understand that you get that slated in here, but a TBD number on this slide does not make me feel good, like we're gonna even be ready to do that.
So what I think that we can do is reach out to some of the, the vendors that actually install turf and ask them, okay, assuming that we need to entirely replace the drainage below. It's not just a surface replacement project. It's a full drainage with a new installation. And the installation of the, of the turf itself is in that ballpark of that five hundred thousand. We need to figure out what would be the cost if we needed a full drainage system installed.
By the way, whatever it's worth from what I've heard from other towns, I also think that five hundred thousand dollar number is a little low. But I, yeah.
But I don't think it's gonna be much less than that.
So for, just for the, the turf itself?
I think it's gonna be more.
Mr. Posowski?
So just to clarify, we're looking at the nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the Hillside Hardscape, which is gonna fix the retaining wall leaning and the fence and that issue.
So this is the breakup according to the engineering report?
And the bleachers.
It's the big concrete retaining wall behind the bleachers underneath the press box. You're talking three hundred and thirty thousand. The, the block wall that the fence sits atop around the edge of the track, another four hundred thousand. And then the, the drainage component, almost another two hundred thousand.
The drainage outside?
In the hill.
In the hill, so not the drainage of the field.
Right, so there'll be drainage that'll be put into the hill and below the, the walk surface behind the, the retaining wall around the, the track.
And that's the nine twenty thousand?
Yep.
Nine hundred and twenty thousand. And then roughly, but probably more?
It's gonna definitely be more because the, the, the number that you've got here, the five hundred and ten,
Yep.
that's maybe to scope it out and, and factor in a brand-new turf track installation, but not a complete drainage.
I agree, it makes sense to do drainage because if it's not working, let's not install new track and turf on top of something.
Again, we can reach out to vendors and, and get some, some estimates on what it would cost if we were gonna do the full, brand-new drainage system underneath with a new track turf installation following that drainage work. And get that, that price back.
I think we need that information as soon as possible. I mean, given where we're at right now, I mean, you know, as I look at this capital plan, I know you're gonna get to stuff in other buildings. My preference is, I'd like to surface this as an FY twenty-six possibility, recognizing the fact that this probably isn't going to be paid for through normal capital planning funds. This is probably a regular borrowing scenario or something along those lines. Our current note, I think, has three years left on it. It's got funding sources. This is gonna require if we borrow again and we, you know, like, but that conversation has to start this year in, in terms of how we, because potentially, you know, if the stars align, maybe we can do this project next summer, right? But, but we, it, it will be.
Current goal ends in twenty twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, yeah, yeah. But look, I mean, it's a debt that we agreed to pay based on the anticipated life cycle of that, of that turf. The turf didn't last long enough, right? So we've gotta, we gotta, you know, it's back to this conversation around needs, right? We gotta replace this thing. It's twenty twenty-eight, people are gonna be hurting themselves.
Yeah, this is probably an incredibly naive question, but that's more money than a capital plan in general would have. Is there anything to go to special town meeting with? Is there any, any flexibility at all in the current? I say it's very, I know the trash thing. So, so I'm just saying that this, to go to capital plan and ask for over a million dollars, you can't do that. So that wipes out the whole capital plan for the town. Well, you can do that.
My view is you can put it on the capital plan. The, the way we go about funding these things is subject to lots of conversation with, you know, the Finance Committee and the Capital Planning Committee and the town manager. You know, the way the current turf was paid for was a regular borrowing scenario. So it's, you, you bond it and then you pay for it inside of the letter, right? Through the regular budget. And the way it's currently paid for is that we've got revolving funds that basically run into that line of things.
So we, we, we have a budget wise that goes forty-five thousand and annually forty-five thousand gets transferred back over to the town from our budget. And then the revenue that comes in from the cell tower goes directly to the town and that is applied as well to OEO.
So, so again, I, I don't know how we're gonna pay for this thing, right? But, but we don't get this conversation going. Because God forbid, we get into planning for FY twenty-seven and we're in a financial crisis and we can't do it or we do, you know, like, this is, this is not like piece in passios where you can and can't. This is, this is a safety issue.
I'm gonna ask a really unpopular question. What happens if we don't do it?
If we don't do it, we shut down that field.
We'll end up having a host of problems.
What are the consequences of not doing the turf field and have, not having a turf field available to the schools?
Likely renting another field from another school.
Or we won't be able to have the youth organizations renting our field space because we'll need it for all of our athletic programming, whether that's games or practices.
And I, I don't even think that it would be feasible. I mean, if you took, you know, LISA and the adult programs out of it, I honestly don't think that we could do it with the fields that we have, particularly in the fall. It's spring and we can get away with it, but in the fall, I, I don't think we can do it.
In cases like that, if we felt that we did everything that we could and we're still kind of short for our schedule, we would end up coordinating with other, other districts in our league and hosting some of our home games on their, on their facility.
And then you're posting, you know.
Would, would we still be able to do the sports?
Again, it would take coordination and cooperation with other, other districts in the league if they were willing to allow us to have our home scheduled games on the facility. It, it will, it, it will definitely take some, some effort on the part of our athletic director for sure.
Sorry, the worst-case scenario. So I know, not a good question to ask, what happens if we don't have a turf field, but?
Yep.
No, I, I think we have to find a way to do this, you know.
It's a question.
I don't know how we do this. We look at the Finance Committee over there on the corner.
Another thing about the drainage thing, it doesn't address the Turkey Hill issue, the Turk, Lake Turkey Hill around the playground area.
It, it may eventually though, if, if we're diverting the drainage coming down the hill
Yes, I think they're related.
in a different direction, we may see some improved circumstance.
I can tell you, you know, Lake Turkey Hill has always been there long before, long before that track came into existence. So I'm very skeptical of that.
But that is something that if at some point there was a Turkey Hill renovation project or a tear-down, new build on that area, that the drainage could be addressed as part of that.
Okay.
All right, so just to move quickly through, you've got the auditorium booth upgrades. This was also one of the projects that we put through as a possible ARPA funding request. But in case that isn't something that the Select Board decides to fund, it is carried here in the plan as well. Concession stand, field house, key card access on that, on that building. Again, this was one of the ARPA-funded projects that we had discussed. It's gonna be carried here as well until decisions are made about ARPA funding. In working with our IT department, again, putting out there on the horizon with the age of this building, the age of the projectors, the wall-mounted projectors that we have in, in the middle high school, they will be reaching end of useful life and, you know, we'll, we'll be needing to do some replacement of all of those devices as well. This number here is based on those touchscreens that we've installed in, in Turkey Hill and would be looking to install that at the primary as well. We can get more refined about what the latest technology is at that point and what a replacement option might look like a few years out from now if technology has changed. So this is, this is just to put it on the radar, that there's gonna have to be a massive swap-out and upgrade of, of that equipment.
The, the existing equipment, my understanding is it is holding up pretty well. I mean, we're blowing bulbs here and there, but it's not.
Yep.
No, no, I understand that, it's just in terms of the early indicators are, it's gonna be, it's meantime between failure.
Yep, we can continue to monitor the, the health of, you know, the equipment that we do have. And it's possible, you know, two years out from now as we revise a ten-year lookout, maybe we can push it off another year if things are holding up reasonably well. But I do think it's time to put it on here as a placeholder that this is a big, a replacement project that's gonna have to happen.
Do you recommend doing them all at once instead of a slow rollout?
Well, let, let's just say that in places where we have done some upgrades, maybe the AC at the primary school is becoming equity issues.
Ah, okay.
Because not all classrooms are now outfitted with a mini support.
Excellent.
Yes. That said, if that's what it takes to do within a two-phase, we do the high school side one year, we do the middle school side another year. Again, we have plenty of time to talk about that, but it is on the horizon.
It's a, it's also gonna be, there's a learning or associated with any new technology, particularly if it's involved in day, like literally day-to-day instruction. I, I remember when we opened the school, hearing stories about this stuff isn't super easy to use and it takes some learning to integrate the technology and that.
Yep, yep. Turkey Hill is gonna need a hot water tank replacement. Again, we're, it was, we, we looked up the information last year when we did the capital plan. The information on the tank itself, the tank was built in two thousand and two. The useful life on these is about twenty years. So we're already past the twenty-year useful life based on the year it was built. Classroom mini splits for Turkey Hill, again, this is another, it's here, but this is a project that we could potentially pursue with the Green Communities grant. You know, in, in this particular case with Turkey Hill where it may very well be a useful backup heat source, it may actually be a better, a better candidate for a Green Communities project. So we'll, we are going to be exploring this one a little bit further as maybe there's a potential alternate funding source. This one here, you know, we can talk about whether to leave it in as a separate project or whether this is part and parcel of any reno upgrade after we get the engineering assessment on what's it gonna cost to get us ADA compliant? What will have to be upgraded in that building? And maybe we put the window replacement as part of that whole upgrade and maybe we take it out as a separate standalone project. Some, something to consider, but, you know, I, I, for now anyway, I've put it a, a couple of years out from here, which gives us time to see what the engineering assessment looks like of the, of the Turkey Hill building. And we may have a different conversation after we see that, but for now, it's still in here.
This is for twenty-nine.
Yeah, she's got twenty-nine.
Because we, I mean, we really want to, on the capital planning committee, we wanna plan around at least a five-year time horizon and make some recommendations and priorities. So my thinking is until we have a plan, then we need to leave it there as a placeholder so that the, the capital planning committee, the special budget committee and the finance committee can all track this as something that needs to be accounted for.
We still need to come up with a long-term cohesive plan for our buildings. And do we know when the engineer, the engineering report for Turkey Hill is gonna come back?
No. I mean, we, we've expressed that it's a process that we need to get to and it's, it's information that we need for future planning. Actually had a conversation with Mr. Bargette in trying to get just the generic sort of engineering assessment bid out. And they explained, no, this isn't something that we wanna wait and see if we can do something with MSBA funding an assessment. This is for a bigger picture conversation about the future of this building potentially as a, as a municipal building when it's no longer a school. And we're just trying to get an assessment of what, what would it take to get this to, to a code compliance so that we can then have more conversation about how do we see the future of this building? And then make some decisions around that.
So what are we looking at time-wise for this?
I'm, I'm gonna be really, I'm gonna, you know, tell you long range here. I, I don't expect anything short of maybe about a six-month window. If I can pull it off before that, that would be phenomenal. If I can pull it off before that, that would be phenomenal, but I don't want to give you some unrealistic expectations. Because what we're finding is that it's extraordinarily slow. That all of the projects that we've initially bid means that we're getting engineers in. And then the engineers come for, eh each one of the capital projects that we were getting underway, the engineers have come in and they've assessed. And then they've said, well, we need you to do some asbestos testing because if we're going to take the frame of doors off, we're gonna disturb the concrete blocks. Or potentially glazing and whatnot, there could be asbestos. We need to now wait until we can get asbestos folks in to do that assessment and get us a report. And then it goes back to the engine, it has been frustratingly slow. So I don't want to set unrealistic expectations. It is urgent, we know it's urgent, we need this information to make decisions, right? That our decisions that impact the bigger picture for the town too, right? So we know the importance and the urgency of getting this information. But I I have to say, I I have been enormously frustrated with the pace of how this all is progressing. So I I don't wanna set any unrealistic expectations here.
Okay, that's just good information that helps and we can know time wise, uh cuz it's hard, I feel like until that comes up, we can't.
We can't.
Have a discussion about these things, but then it makes the capital planning difficult.
Correct. Um primary school needs a generator, the building does not have a generator. And we have been trying for the last couple of years if we could maybe squeeze out just a smidge of money from our budget that we would be able to just. Install a generator, um but we have not been able to do that, um so it's on the plan. Um what we really need, we we got it, we got a price for the whole building being on the generator. Way too much money, it was like a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, but we don't, I don't need to have the whole building on the generator. I need to have the boiler and the kitchen. If we lose the refrigeration, right, or the freezer, uh we we could be losing hundreds or more uh in spoiled food. If we happen to lose power for an extended period of time, and sometimes it doesn't have to be super long, um during a real cold snap. We can have frozen pipes that burst and then there's damage there that we need to address. We, this is, in my mind, this is an insurance policy for the building, we we need to have a generator. Um to me, this is a high priority because it's an investment in in our in our building.
Are there any areas that would need emergency lighting?
Um I think that we have emergency lighting backup somehow in the building, I'll double check on that. But we don't have, it, there's no source to keep the kitchen and the boiler room running if there's a power outage.
Is this the only building, only school that we have?
This is the, this is the only one that does not have a generator, our other generators are diesel.
So I would like, I think it would make sense to put that in the request and also that, maybe it was probably even in the designs, but they took it out to save money maybe.
They probably did.
But I think it would be good, I think there's a salary for this new school.
And we've been extraordinarily lucky that for the last uh almost twenty years that we have not had an issue that resulted in damage to the building.
What happened in two thousand eight, what did we do during the ice storm?
We put it under water.
It was cold, but it wasn't that cold.
Yeah, the um one other thought on that, when I was, when I did a tour of the building a year ago, so Mr. Priscilla. He was pointing to a lot of electronic telemetry because there there are a lot of electronically controlled systems in that building, HVAC and a bunch of other stuff. All of which frequent outages are known to reduce the lifespan of that telemetry. Can you run into issues similar to what we had with the panel at Turkey Hill? Now Turkey Hill was built in nineteen sixty nine, that thing lasted a very long time, but the um, you know, the 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 probability of certain systems going down. As a result of of not being shut down or turned on properly is um is very likely putting a strain on the system.
And we had trouble even in this building here with power outages where, oop, power went out, oop, power came back on, but the boilers didn't reset. Um so uh Mr. Heeby's been looking at sort of uh systems that can notify him. If if it doesn't come back on, so that if it happens over weekend and the power goes out, we're not here on Monday morning in a freezing cold building because the boilers haven't been working all weekend. Um so that he could come out and reset.
Do you, does this building have a battery backup or is it, is there an interruption when the generators come on, do you know?
For the boiler room?
For critical systems like boilers and HVAC?
I'm gonna say, I I can't say for sure, but my guess would be no, since we have trouble when the power goes out and comes back on.
Yeah, it is on.
And and there, it doesn't, just put the boilers back on. So my guess is no, Mr. Heeby would be the one to answer that question, um so I'll have to, I'll have to follow up with him. We still have the primary school window safety film on the list. We have phase two of the classroom AC down at the primary and, but like I said, it's. Already been brought to my attention that this is an equity issue that some rooms have mini supports and others do not. So I know that this is not an emergency urgent sort of capital project.
Do some classrooms still have AC mini splits?
They, the project has, I I think it's, is it complete? It's pretty close to complete if it's not complete, um but again, we don't, we never were going to with phase one be able to put the units in every single classroom. So there are classrooms that do not have it, um and I I have already been contacted about that. Um we still have the playground um sort of design process and um installation of a of a new um playground at the primary. So again, this would be more accessible, more scaled to size, more appropriate, but also more accessible for students with disabilities as an example. Um the the equipment that we have down there is not really truly inclusive. Um the driveway uh expansion is still on here. Um the boiler uh replacement at the primary school is still on here, um.
Is the gas condensing boiler something that the Green Communities could take on?
Yeah, why are we looking for a boiler?
So we could potentially. I think we should wait and see what happens, MSBA was doing a study.
Yeah.
To see about, because they're trying to move away from fossil fuel type systems to greener systems. Um so they were doing a study, they've commissioned a study to try to figure out. Whether that's the right move and what kinds of systems are the best type to move forward. Um as soon as they push out some information about that, those are the kinds of projects that MSBA would reimburse as part of their accelerated repair program. If they find that it makes sense.
But these are on hold right now as part of the accelerated repair program.
There would not be, there would be no money for for reimbursement for a boiler replacement, at least not with their current position.
In current.
Right now, they're thinking they're moving away from that entirely. Um but honestly, I uh went to a session with MSBA at the superintendent's conference in July. And um there were superintendents that were asking them if they would consider some sort of hybrid move, right? Um so stay tuned on that is I guess my best uh information, um it pending whatever they find when they, when they do this.
Yeah, I mean, the the reality is even if we don't do a boiler and we go to full reliance on on heat pumps or mini splits or whatever, we'll probably spend that much money anyway, right? So it it probably is a placeholder.
So I put this on as a placeholder in the very out years because we know with the age of the building, the primary. All the mechanicals on the top of that roof are are gonna have to be addressed uh based on age and useful life. Um I don't have a price for you on that right this minute, but again, it would be in the out years. So it it maybe doesn't even really impact the intent of the capital planning committee to really nail down a five year window for plan. But just know that this is on the horizon in the out years. Um in talking with Mr. Heeby, rather than a second dump truck, we we have, we have a dump truck, we have a an older pickup. Um he'd like to actually replace this one with a utility truck. And that's the kind of truck that has like the the cabinets on the side, the back ends of the truck where you can put, you know, uh tools and equipment and things like that. And store it, lock it in the vehicle itself. Um but this is the condition of the truck that we have currently that we're looking to replace. It's, and these pictures are a year old, so it's maybe advanced and it's um rusty a bit in at this point.
That's an answer good.
Um again, in talking with the IT team, um we really need to uh be looking to replace the central server. That backs up our security camera system for the district. Um because we're we're really at the end of life where it's being supported. It's sort of like the upgrade to Munis, you get to a point where a certain version is no longer gonna be supported. That's that's where we're headed here. We still have the uh pickup with the plow, that was in last year's plan as well. Um it's time for a network firewall replacement round about FY thirty.
If we're lucky.
Um by FY thirty one, the product that we are using will no longer be supported. Um so we will need an upgrade to the phone system district wide, again, so these are in the out years, but they're on the horizon. Um the replacement mower we had in the plan last year as well. So when you start taking a look at, you know, how things map out, um. I do have here in the pink cells, these are the things that, you know, do we wanna consider pulling the window replacement? And all of the code upgrades to Turkey Hill, right, when when we get the report and you know how much money that is. Do do we wanna take that as one package and look for a different type of funding source for that project, not capital planning, right? And I also put in the pink the the turf drainage and the track and turf replacement. Um do we wanna consider pulling these out of the traditional capital plan? Because these are big ticket items that we might wanna do borrowing for, right? So this is something that the committee can consider, how how you wanna proceed with this. And I guess we'd likely defer to Mr. Beermore since he's the chair of the capital plan as to what he thinks is the best way forward. Leave it in the plan, take it out with a s- a separate facility planning type uh document for the capital plan committee to consider. Or even finance committee to consider. I I don't know the best way forward and I'm not sure how you feel about what was placed in FY twenty six. Um. The generator's there, the safety film for primary school, and I don't know if you feel strongly that that needs to be in FY twenty six or if that bumps out. The replacement of the hot water tank.
So.
I've got the safety film at the middle high school still in here as well, the camera server replacement. And right now, the utility pickup with the plow is is in for twenty six based on the condition of the dump truck that we have that's rusting and hurt.
We've also not funded vehicle requests for the last two years, especially in the current fiscal year, so I mean, we can, you know, continue kicking that can, but I think it should be there.
Right, and I don't know, again, I put the auditorium booth and the concession key card projects out another year. I don't know how you feel about the priority for the auditorium to be done in FY twenty six if it's not APFA funded. It's not, it's not an emergency, it's not, it's not a safety issue. I I don't know if we wanna prioritize other things that are.
So. Yeah, just a little bit of feedback here, um. I I I'm looking at this thinking about like, okay, what, aside from the tracking field thing, which is its own handle. Um what is likely to be funded and well received by the capital planning committee? What of the stuff in twenty seven would we say, we really wanna bring this in? Um because it's a safety issue or because whatever. Um I I personally don't think that the additional safety film projects are gonna go in. Not because I don't think that they're warranted, but only one member of the capital planning committee is turning over this year. Um I I in in projecting here, but I haven't had this conversation with our newer member, with our new member, um Mr. Bowen. But I think that what we experienced over the course of the last two years was. It was well out, it was well below the line when we hadn't put together. And then what we managed to achieve was we got Turkey Hill put way up, but as a result of that, the other two fell way down. And and I just, I I think it's going to be a a hard sell. Um again.
Why?
My own, my own position aside.
Could I ask?
Yes.
Why are, why is this a hard sell? Like, it's a cheap thing, it has proven to make a difference, it is for the safety of children. It's not like you're asking for a million dollars for a football field, you're asking for something that protects every single person in the building. It gives the police time to show up. If we were in Anchorage, Alaska and travel across town was impossible, then maybe this would be less necessary.
May maybe, yeah.
But like, we have the very great fortune of having all of the schools. And the police department basically on the same road, if we can give somebody two minutes.
But but that was part of the argument that 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 ensued.
Which was, we don't, we don't wanna give them two minutes.
Which is. You've got a resource officer, you've got police presence literally in the center of town all day long, we just put an additional cruiser on the road during the day. Response time is low, you know, this this is really, there are multiple potential threats. This board's potentially one and it's, you know, it's a risk, it's risk calculus, right? Now, I happen to agree with you, but but the, but I am, but you and I are not. Maybe these, oh maybe, sorry, so maybe it's, we can keep it on if if we feel like it's a need.
I do.
We can change our presentation also to make adjustments and try to stress the importance of why we need it. And and. We could, but. That we see as the years go on that maybe it's something we have to fund on our own and not through capital funding. These discussions, these discussions happen. And perhaps that's it too, but these discussions happened twice over the last two years and we are worried. This building and the primary school building were built within the last twenty-ish years, right, coast to coast line, right? These buildings were built to a certain extent with security in mind. The exterior doors are automatically locked, we have vested fuels, we have, you know, the the type of normal security controls that a twenty first century building has. We don't have. We don't have, also, we don't have the gigantic, you know.
Storefront.
Storefront that we have in, in Turkey Hill, right? So, um, you know, when compared, it was, it really was a no-brainer to prioritize Turkey Hill. In my opinion, I, it, it's a hard sell, it just is.
Do you think we should take it off the capital plan list?
Well, so I think, I, I would consider it. Relative to things like, for example, the playground at the primary school that I consider to be a safety hazard.
Yes.
Rel- relative to the driveway at the primary school that I consider to be a safety hazard. Like, you know, I mean, we, this isn't the only safety problem that we have. And, and so relative to other safety problems and the possibility of getting addressed, in my mind, you know, I, I think it needs to be, I mean, there, look, there.
We just talked about.
If I came for a day, I'd have funded all of them, right?
Well, do you think this is a concern about having a longer list? And, and if they're all on there, the capital plan is still gonna just make their own ready hands.
We can do whatever we want.
We just talked about these basic questions.
We can submit whatever we want.
We just talked about these basic questions. I'm, I don't like that we're talking about taking things off because.
And when we submit these, we can prioritize them like we have in years past, right? So.
Yeah, I would, I would support putting our needs down, and we can prioritize, and they'll prioritize as well.
Yeah, I would, I would like to ask for what our needs are, not for what we think they can get. I, I, I mean, I understand it makes sense to do that. I understand why.
Is there, so just look at the list again, AC Phase Two. Is there a reason we have to wait till FY twenty-seven? Could we put that on FY twenty-six?
I thought that was. We could, and I, I couldn't see if, the, the challenge is, right? That the green communities, you heard, it's gonna, gonna be about two hundred thousand that they're, they're, we're gonna be able to ask for.
But the problem with the AC, and again, this is why I asked the question of you and, and Mr. Blatt. We really need understanding in terms of how we need to classify that AC if we're looking for a green community string. The other thing, very much related to this issue, is the boiler issue that you just talked about at MSBA. This is potentially fundable through MSBA as well, right? If we decide that we're gonna go, that we're gonna go this route as a primary heating system for that building. So in my mind, there's two big questions that need to get answered before we put that in twenty-six and potentially ask the town to pay the whole bill when we really only need to pay a part of the bill.
I would agree with that one.
And if, if we were to use the, um, mini splits as a primary heating source, they'd have to go through the whole building, obviously. And if you were getting rid of the gas boilers, your generator cost is gonna go up much higher too. Because if the power goes out, the mini splits are not going to work without the generator.
That's a fair point.
And if we, if we did that installation at, let's say, Turkey Hill, where.
Where it makes more sense.
Right?
Yeah, as far as heating.
You're talking about also having to have them in the cafeteria, in the kitchen area, in the gym. So it's more than just classrooms. So the price tag would actually be higher for Turkey Hill than, than what I've got here. Because we, if we were looking to install them and potentially receive reimbursement funding, it would be to use them as a heat source.
Right.
So that price tag would be higher, but potentially we would be getting some reimbursement.
Yeah.
And the generator there be able to take that kind of a load.
I know you need to have a bigger generator.
Yeah.
I, I think we should, I think we need answers to those questions. Because there's just, you know, given all of the requests that are coming in.
Yep.
If there's a possibility that something is, you know, that we get some help in twenty-seven versus paying an old bill in twenty-six, I can tell you what the answer is.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's why I like the, the, the AC heat for Turkey Hill is not, it's not next year for sure. Because we're not gonna know enough from MSBA as to whether or not they are going to look to add that as a possible accelerated repair that, you know, is eligible for some reimbursement. We may be looking at, if, if we find out that that's true, it actually may be more like FY twenty-eight before we should actually do it through MSBA.
FY twenty. Processors will get to it. I think we need to where it is, or, or leave it in, in twenty-seven. I do think though, based on what you just brought up, Carol, somebody needs to run a scenario on the generator for probably, right? It's like, is that thing, is, is, is that, is, is that power spec?
Primary?
Yeah, is that power spec for what's there, or what we think will be there?
So if you think about, if you wanna be able to run all of the mini splits that are in, and if more mini splits go in at the primary school, to run the whole building, you're talking, we had a quote, for a hundred and seventy-one thousand, to, to have the generator tied into the panel to run the whole building. And I asked them to modify and tell me what, what, what's the cost if I just wanna keep the kitchen and the boiler room on the generator? And they said, well, I need to come out and, and size things up again, but if you can go to a smaller-sized generator, that, that's when they said it was about seven thousand.
And so our assumption here is we're not programming the building on generator power. We're, we're keeping the building functioning.
From freezing. Right, and keep the food from.
All right, fair enough, I, I, I think that's fair, okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yep. So are there, are there things in twenty-seven or twenty-eight or that you would want moved in to twenty-six? If I, if I'm taking off the film projects?
The driveway study.
I think the later I am driveway, in my mind, you're like.
The, the driveway study, that is a safety issue. The way that it is, it blocks up is concerning, especially at, especially.
When there's events.
Yeah, when there's events, and when there's, um, pickup and drop-off. I was there that day that the fire alarm stuck, older, went off, and.
And it's too narrow.
So, yeah, so, yeah, I would consider move, I mean, the sum total there is sixty thousand dollars in twenty-six. It makes twenty-seven an interesting year if we do it.
And is this our final?
No.
No, no.
Okay, so this is just, okay.
Like, the secretary of the, the primary school would be a good person to utilize for the driveway knowledge.
I'm hoping there's a creative solution, 'cause I have stared at that. It's, it's gonna be engineers that are gonna tell us what we can and cannot do there, because there are gonna be environmental limitations to what we can do.
But I think the, the key is gonna be expressing the concern to the capital planning, why it's really important that.
It's a safety issue, and I can tell you right now that both chiefs recognize that it's a safety issue.
Yeah, that might be good, yeah, he's the old chief's to have a comment on the.
Yep.
And my concern is that whatever driveway issue, it might involve where the playground is. And so.
Well, so that discussion came on last year. Okay, let's not.
Cause before it was the other way around.
Playground and driveway.
As if we can get the road to go around that way, that might be.
So we would have to make sure we do this so that we're not without a playground.
So are you okay with, um, the camera server replacement staying in twenty-six? And the utility pickup staying in twenty-six? Um, what are your thoughts on placement in twenty-seven for the auditorium booth upgrades and the concession stand key cards?
Let's see what happens with the other ones. That's okay, but we'll see what happens.
That's also a very good point. I mean, theoretically, we should vote on this in our first meeting in September. And we should have an indication in terms of where we're at with ARPA by then. I mean, theoretically.
Is this due to the capital planning?
So there is no due date right now. What we have asked or are asking of the department heads is when can you get them to us? With the intention of not doing this entirely in October and November, and then racing the submit in December, but doing it in September and October, having something that we have a really good understanding of what we want in twenty-six, and then look at a prioritization and feedback loop around the out years, the beginnings of a five-year capital plan. But to do that, we need these submissions sooner rather than later. So what I've asked is, can we do this in September?
We're gonna be over two years, we're gonna get that early.
And so, you know, and, and truth be told, there are some other challenges. The facilities director for the town is on maternity leave. Like, there, there's other many factors where, if we can go sooner than we have in the past, I think that would be everybody's benefit.
The auditorium booth, is that from a community standpoint, as far as using it for the town meetings and issues there? Or is it for a meditation standpoint?
Both.
How do you know?
Both, please.
And just for the benefit of the entire, uh, committee, Mr. Beermore had raised the issue of hearing aid compatibility, or at least improved audio for folks with hearing aid. And when I brought that back to the tech department, um, we already have devices. Um, they are available. And we will, when we're setting up for, um, the fall town meeting, we'll make sure that at the check-in desk, when people come in, they get their clicker. If they need a device for hearing aid, they can pick one up when they come in. And we do have something like.
Well, it is, it, but it, it's better than it is. The, the, the frustrating thing is, this thing's been sitting in a box for eight years.
Well, that's it, but, um.
The town moderator knows too.
But our, um, it's our.
Yeah, I wanna publicize that and make sure citizens know, cause, um, that they.
Yeah, and I'm sure that the town moderator would make that announcement, just like what they made the announcement.
We gotta make it before the meeting, so people aren't skipping the meeting, cause they think they won't be able to hear.
Yep. Um, so that, that's fine, and we will make sure that when the techs do the upgrades to the audio with the, with the booth, that they test and make sure that those devices are all synced right as well.
Well, I think this is good. Uh, I, yeah, I might wanna move the driveway to twenty-six, but I don't know.
Yeah, I think we should look at the driveway.
The, the planning part, right, and therefore, therefore it would be a twenty-six, twenty-seven follow-up ver- versus a twenty-seven, twenty-eight follow-up.
Yeah, but it's also in the plan, where you're informed, you can understand where the one thing relates to the other thing and positioning and that kind of thing.
I'd like to do like twenty-six, twenty-seven, and then the playground would be a twenty-seven, and like, the driveway would be the end of, so the driveway and the playground would end up being built very close together.
It would make sense to know where the full driveway is first, then figure out the numbers.
But I don't, I don't, I really don't agree on that.
Right, and if we may, when we get the designs back, decide that, nope, this has to be done first, we'll do that. We, we would ask for the funding in this fiscal year, and we would delay the installation of the other until this fiscal year.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
All right. Thank you for putting this together. Um, do we wanna rank order? Or do you want me to put the list together and send it out, and then you all put each rank order and send it back to me?
I think that works.
And I sort of tabulate like we did last year?
I think that works.
And if everybody's okay with it, I would prefer median versus mean, if we could do that. Median is the, the middle ranking versus just averaging them. So if you have like, uh, first rank, first rank, first rank, first rank, and a nineteenth rank, it doesn't average out, you take the median or the middle of that list, so you take the one.
So as the, as the new capital planning committee chair, I probably need a math lesson from the resident.
Yeah, but I think median is usually a better picture of like a group.
I know what you're talking about.
Versus the. Yeah, we can do both too.
I, I could provide you with both.
And our outliers don't drastically change the data.
That's right, we have a superintendent with a STEM background, we're gonna get you there. Political science degree from University of Southern Maine, could not include that.
All right, well, thank you very, very much for the discussion and the feedback, and we'll make those adjustments and, um, share back of the, the spreadsheet version. And then we can make updates to the slide deck so that the, that we're ready to go for the capital plan committee as well.
Thank you. The, uh, the only comment I had about the, the slides too, you had TBD on the, the big Excel part.
Yep.
Put those question marks in the slide, individual slides?
Yep.
I think keeping them all consistent with the TBD, with the dollar amounts that weren't noted, better than the question marks. Any other questions or comments? All right, moving on, the next item of the agenda is a discussion on the review of the operating protocols. Uh, I'll turn it over to Superintendent, do you have any feedback?
I did not see any feedback.
Any questions or comments about protocols? I think the key is really just following them and then just staying on a path to.
We're so good at that. They're very aligned with the NASC protocols and other areas of protocols.
We put a lot of work in these last two years.
We really have.
It is good work in documents.
Yeah, one, uh, one comment was, I think that there was a red line from last year in this document, and it does need to be unread lined and put into a permanent document.
The positive.
Is there a way the public can access these?
I believe that they will, they, they are posted. Our current protocols are posted on the school committee website, and it, under operating protocols, so.
Yeah, so did they just clean out that scrap, the strike-through and the, the red marking?
And then I will.
And then not much changed that they were reviewed. Um, in August or November.
One, uh, one thing that we had for a while and then went away when I think that the resource, the, the multifunctional room on the other side started being used for classes, we actually had these posted in the room that we were meeting in. I don't know if our intention is to do this room permanently, uh, next year or what, but I'd love to see them posted sometimes.
This room is just because, um, of the cleaning of the building and the helmet.
The acoustics are better in this room, for what it's worth, so.
I think there's less stuff in here.
We forgot to save the pledge today.
It wasn't on.
It was on the agenda.
Wasn't on the agenda. Brian didn't go broke.
But for what it's worth, I, I do think we should post them someplace physically.
Probably post them on Facebook in that place where everybody.
We can, yeah, we could, I, I'd like to put it on the Facebook school committee.
It's a great idea. I don't even have Facebook, so I don't know what I'd be talking about.
Oh, you missed a good one then.
Oh, oh, don't go there.
All right, moving on then. Um, next item of the agenda is an action item, uh, Chapter Seventy funding update. So I had drafted a letter, I did get some feedback, and Dr. Burnham was able to make those changes. You can see that in your folder, I can read it as is unless there's any other modifications.
Did you add the name of it?
No, no.
It's called in the action deed.
Okay, it's good, okay. Uh, dear interim town manager, members of the Lunenburg Select Board, and members of the Finance Committee, thank you for your continued support of Lunenburg Public Schools. This letter is to request allocation of the recent increase in Chapter Seventy funding to the school budget for the upcoming school year. As you may know, the FY twenty-five conference committee budget was released recently, and it proves that Lunenburg has received an additional thirty-one thousand eight hundred eighty-two dollars in Chapter Seventy funding over the governor's initial proposal. While the updated cherry sheet estimates are still pending, it is clear that the legislator, legislature intended for these additional funds to support our schools. Therefore, we request the funds be designated for appropriation to the school department at special town meeting in November. In light of the ongoing hiring challenges faced by Superintendent Burnham, these additional funds, though not extensive, could significantly help in addressing pressing needs within our school system. Ensuring that our schools have the necessary resources is crucial for maintaining the highest standard of education that our children deserve. Kindly consider including this additional thirty-one thousand eight hundred eighty-two dollars in the school budget for the upcoming academic year. Your attention to this matter will greatly benefit our students, staff, and the overall quality of education in our community. Thank you for your attention to this important issue, and for your continued dedication to the welfare of our town. Respectfully, Lunenburg School Committee.
Is that amount the budget the governor signed, or was that the proposed? I'm looking it up now.
Yeah, you've got a memo in there, um, that's the, that's the final figure.
So Dr. Gilson took care of that in the memo we have in our folder, the, the change, the original amount and the change to new amount, and the difference.
Okay, so that's the final amount, that is the final amount.
Do we wanna edit the, as you may know, paragraph? And instead of it appears now that it's, I think it's finalized, that. that it's, I think it's finalized, that Lunenburg has received?
Yeah.
Instead of it appears?
We should probably...
At the time we were notified, it was that it was pending.
Well...
And then I don't know if the cherry sheet estimates are still pending at this point now, because the, the budget has been signed.
Cherry sheets have been issued.
Um, I don't, they're not updated and it doesn't look like it still has Conference Committee.
I just don't know if we have the, the, have assumed we have the final numbers now at this point.
These are the final numbers.
Yeah. So I don't think we need the...
There's nothing pending.
And then the...
We should probably change it to have Carter.
While the updated cherry sheet estimates are still pending, I think we can get rid of that part too. It is, and then just start with the sentence, it is clear.
We should also change it to have Carter's name, Mr. Terantini, instead of dear interim town manager.
I think that's just the position. That's this title.
Okay.
I think this is fine. It communicates the intent.
And we can put this on letterhead, um, and the chair can come in and sign the final version.
Do we need a motion or?
And scan and email it.
Do you want us to all sign the final version?
The chair is fine.
Because this is the part one.
So it is an action item.
I move to approve the letter as drafted.
Second?
We have a motion to approve the letter as drafted. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Staying? Thank you. The motion passed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for putting that together.
Next item of the agenda is public comment. I'm going to open up public comment to the public first. Is there anyone in the public who has a public comment? I would remind you to, um, not mention names of personnel or students. Is there anyone on Zoom with a public comment? Please raise your hand or your virtual hand. So anything in the chat? Okay, seeing no public comment from the public. I'll open up the public comment from the committee.
I did want to say something.
Yes?
Um, it was a weird week. Um, it was a weird week. As a member of the school committee, we can't talk about certain things. We can't share on Facebook where it can be seen by other committee members, uh, because that's disgusting outside of a posted meeting. Um, we're bound by open meeting laws. Um, and we certainly cannot be discussing or commenting on employee, on employee matters. Um, if you want to talk about an issue, there are ways to do it. Um, if you want to talk about curriculum or issues that you're having, you should come in and talk about curriculum or the issues you're having. Um, please come in and talk. Email Dr. Burnham. Uh, she responds to every email she gets. She responds to phone calls. She will call you back. She'll talk to you. You can email us on the school committee. Uh, the district, they love talking about the curriculum. They're proud of the curriculum. Uh, when Ms. Scott was curriculum director, she loved talking about the curriculum. And if you had concerns about the curriculum, she would meet with you. I've met with her to talk about the curriculum. And she'll talk about the curriculum and any concerns you have, and she will answer questions. If you have questions about the curriculum or about your child's learning, you should call and talk because you're an involved parent and that's what you want to do. There's a process and that's how we get it done. We're very open about that. We want to talk to you. You can come to school committee meetings. You can make public comments. You can talk to us. You can email us. You can email Dr. Burnham. You can email the curriculum director when we, we're currently filling the position. But you, you can email. You can come have a meeting face to face. Dr. Burnham offered meetings face to face with concerned parents. I saw some of the comments on Facebook. I saw how many comments there were. I got two emails total from members of the public. I actually got one email and another one was forwarded so we could see the response. Um, only two people cared enough to actually write out an email to members of the school committee. Uh, tonight, I kind of expected someone to come and speak to us when they're concerned about the curriculum based on the amount of betrayal and the amount of comments and the amount of anger and, and just the, the wave of activity. But there was one public speaker tonight who came and spoke about it. Nobody came and spoke to us about concerns they have. And we got two emails about it. Um, this is the avenue to make your complaints, not social media. And I don't know what the point is. I like when we learn from our mistakes. I like when we learn from things. And I don't know what the takeaway from this is. I would like to learn that we've learned as a community to maybe calm down and not lean into a mob mentality, to maybe next time this happens, look and stop and think. Is one or two people responding to every comment on a Facebook post? Is it just one or two of the same people responding to the same comments over and over, over and over to inflame discourse? Is one person claiming to be speaking for a silent majority that makes it seem like a bigger issue in order to sway you? Is the information presented in a factual, non-inflammatory way? What is the original source of the information? Is the original source of the information unbiased and presented in an unbiased, factual way? And I'm going to say again, I got, we, I got two emails about this. Two people actually cared enough to send an email directly to members of the school committee. But there were hundreds of comments made on Facebook, and I think less than five people ended up meeting with Dr. Burnham about this. Our kids are watching, and we need to show them how we want them to act. Uh, in Lunenburg, our strength is our sense of community. We're a small town. It makes it a little harder sometimes. In the small district, it makes it harder. Like our money doesn't go as far. It, it makes it harder. So we need to focus on our strengths, which is our community, our bonds, our connections, and our interpersonal relationships, which is what I value about living in a small town. It's why I like living here. So there was hurt done this week. People were hurt. It's not a great reflection of our community. If a potential candidate for positions in our school were to come across the discussions that happened, I'm worried it would make them unlikely to want to apply here. Uh, we're already having difficulty with getting applicants, qualified applicants, to apply for jobs. I don't think this helped. So I want us to try and do better. I know it's the end of the meeting and nobody's watching this, but I do want us to try and do better. And if you want to participate in the process, participate in the process. Show up to school committee meetings, email, call Dr. Burnham, participate in the actual process. Choose kindness and choose connections and choose to build community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Beard Morgan?
Yeah, so I, I do think that there are learning opportunities here. And I did discuss some of these briefly to the superintendent yesterday or today. Um, the first is, I, I do think we need to think about our communications policies once again. Think about how we are, um, how we are operating in a world of social media, because it is a real phenomenon. And our protocols that we just passed really do not account for that phenomenon. And, and I wrote the protocol three or four months ago when misinformation was coming out about the way the budget was being applied. Number one, because I knew the facts. And number two, because I thought, I saw something spinning out of control and nobody was doing anything. But that's not my job, and I shouldn't be doing it. Somebody else should be doing it. And I think that we need to be thoughtful about how we deal with that, because there is a trend here. There is no doubt about it. The second thing is, as this was going down this weekend, I was thinking about, hey, I want to be able to refer to our curriculum, our hiring practice, the process, those kinds of things. And we have a well-stated, I think, hiring policy, but we, our hiring policy in practice is not enshrined in school committee policy. Um, and I, I think that if we're pointing people to anything, it should be school committee policy. Um, so I think that's something that has probably been overlooked, um, instantly overlooked. Uh, but I think that we need to, we need to do something about that and put it on our agenda for, in the future.
Any other public comment?
I want to say something.
Mr. Scalabrine?
I don't want to make this meeting take me longer, but...
Well, I'll stay, I guess.
First of all, I, I purposely abstained from Facebook because it is not productive. But the bigger point is, in nineteen sixty-eight, after Martin Luther King was assassinated, a woman named Jane Elliott had a school project with third graders. And in that third grade class, she taught them about what discrimination was. And she segregated the class and the children based on their eye color. And she told her students, the students with blue eyes were better than the students with brown eyes. And she gave them all sorts of different privileges based solely on their eye color. And at the end of a period of two or three weeks, she told the children that all of this was garbage and that it was just stuff she made up, and it was a way to teach them about discrimination. In nineteen seventy, Jane Elliott appeared on The Tonight Show at the invitation of Johnny Carson. When she came on the show, she got a rousing ovation from the crowd, because people in nineteen seventy understood that racism was real, that discrimination was real, and that we needed to teach children about it. I am afraid that we live in a society in which people can no longer do that. And if we do not allow our schools to operate as a marketplace of ideas, where people can hear different perspectives, then we are doing a disservice to our children. Our children are going to go out in a world that is multicultural, and equipping them with the ability to deal with different people with diverse views and making them aware of discrimination is core to student achievement. And that's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Alright, seeing none. Yes?
Thank you all for your attention.
Is there any other, I guess there's no other public comment? Looking for a motion to adjourn at nine thirty-four P M?
Motion to adjourn.
Thanks, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Good luck.